Well, good morning. We will go ahead and start the Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting December 15th. It is 9:08 a.m. And so I call this meeting to order. And at this time, call for invocation and ask Councilman Spotta, Torch Chief, if he would offer a prayer.
(Crying) I ask for everything, I say a prayer. Noah had this, he does get that good, he has this in wallet. He has that, that he says, oh, he's there, so he's up there, he's down. He has this, he does get that good, he has that good, but he's, guess who to check stuff on, he says, he does get that good. Check, he's a dude, he's a dude, God, why he has this, he does get that good. He has this, he does get that good, so he stay what he got, he did it, he has this, he does get that good. Anyway, he got it, anyway, he did it, he got it, anyway, he took that, he said it, he did it, he has this, he does get that good. Thankful to you for this wonderful life of Mr. and Mrs. and everyone that's here. I continue to be with all the Business Council here, the Chartered Chiefs Council, all the representatives of organizations and stuff that we have amongst our people here. And most of all, we bless all of our Pawnee people from the youngest to the oldest, wherever you may find them at, wherever they may be, and take care of them, help them along, you know. You be with us here throughout the day as we try to make the best decisions possible on behalf of our nation, our people. So I ask that you be with those that are in need, those that are in need of help, those that are having heavy heart today. You take care of them, watch over them, help them in the days to come, in the days ahead. So myself, you know, I know my leave of honor said that I ask that you take care of it the best way you can see fit. So all these things, I ask you, help them.
Yeah, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll call roll. Here.
Darrell Walker?
Here.
Amy Littleson?
Here.
Angela Thompson?
Here.
Sammy Edson?
Uh, excuse?
Donna Hare?
Here.
Adrian Spotta, Torch Chief, here. Leanna Chapman, here.
All right, I declare a quorum. And we will move on down to item number three, approval of agenda.
Um, I just got there talking to Pallett Inpumps down at the training post. And he was telling me that he wanted to know when he needed to come down, or he needed to come down to discuss the exposition for director. And I told him that I didn't see it on the agenda, and I still don't see it, maybe I'm missing it here, but anyway, he was pretty sure it was supposed to be on our city call, and was told it was going to be on. I don't know if we need to put it on here, or...
Yeah, let's go ahead and put that on there, discussion on the expo director. So that would be item number seven. Also would like to add, and I'm sorry for this, and I meant to do that, but I didn't, discussion on letter to President-elect Trump from the Pawnee Nation. And so I would like that on item number eight.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for December 15, 2016 with the ad amendments.
Is there a second?
All second.
Call for the vote.
Darrell Walker?
Yes.
Amy Littleson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spotta, Torch Chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
All right, so the agenda is set. Move on down to item number four, the approval of minutes, Pawnee Business Council Meeting Minutes of November 17, 2016.
November 17, 2016.
All right, motion is made, is there a second? If not, call for the vote.
Darrell Walker?
Yes.
Amy Littleson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spotta, Torch Chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
All right, so the minutes are approved. Next, we move to item number five in this Pawnee Business Council President Report. And would like to say this morning, welcome to each one that is here, our new employees and things, and that's good. And I know there's a lot of sickness going through the tribe, and I know even here on the council, we were battling things and stuff, and, but I appreciate everyone coming this morning to the council meeting and contributing and having a part. That's always a tough thing, when you don't feel good, when you don't feel good, but you carry on, so I just want to say thank you to each one. And remember, wash your hands and don't pass it on. So just that time of the year. As far as the President's Report, want to report that at the last council meeting that we had, I was in Albuquerque, I was at the Direct Service Tribe Quarterly Meeting there. And once again, the discussion, and I think the overwhelming discussion for all national meetings right now is the new incoming administration and what that means. I know there's a lot of uncertainty in all the agencies right now, and, you know, where everyone's looking at who's being selected for these cabinet positions, and, you know, and then the experts are trying to, you know, determine, you know, what that means for Indian country and the Indian world, and specific departments, whether that be health, education, BIA, you know, whatever that may be. And so, you know, that's, you know, the national meetings that I've attended, that has been the overwhelming, you know, I don't want to use the word dark cloud, but the cloud that is there as far as uncertainty, uncertainty. And at the Direct Service Tribe Meeting, it was the same. They did have a strategic planning session and trying to find some better ways, better ways of conducting business, better ways of trying to have that voice with IHS. The self-governance tribes have, seem to have a bigger voice, they have better attendance, they have bigger conferences and things, and, you know, the Direct Service Tribes are, we're trying to get the tribes who are still direct service involved through the tribal leadership and how we're to do that. Right now, the Direct Service Tribes is in the process of selecting a new director, and right now, the one that they're looking at is Rosalind Sewell. And so they're having discussion about that and getting tribal input on that. And so that's what happened there in Albuquerque. Also attended a health transition meeting on behalf of the Southern Plains Tribal Health Board there in DC. That was a lot bigger meeting with many, many folks there, I think they had almost 200 people that attended that meeting. And once again, looking at, you know, what is going to happen with this new administration, who's going to be selected for what positions, who's going to be leaving. They'll be selecting a new IHS Director. Several names have come up, but really no definite word on that. And so just a lot of uncertainty in the health world and with IHS. What is being said, though, is that they're anticipating budget cuts, not really looking for, even though we are submitting, have submitted an increased budget for this coming year, not really looking to see any increases. If anything, they're anticipating, hold the line for this year budget and just make do. So those things were said. They had Congressman Cole spoke, and Senator Tester spoke, and different ones, and the Indian advocates there in Congress, you know, trying to say some positive things, you know. But even their words weren't very positive. So it's just, you know, that's the world that we live in and things, and so we're just going to have to see how things play out. Also attended the Oklahoma Council on Indian Education there in Tulsa, and that was an interesting meeting, never have attended that, never even had heard of that. And they had asked for tribal participation, tribal leadership to come, trying to look at the impact of gaming monies with the State of Oklahoma, and having the Indian leadership, the Indian tribes, to have a voice with the governor and with her administration on trying to get more monies into, not just Indian education, but overall education and things. And so looking for that help from the tribal leadership. Very, very poor participation. There was, I believe, only four tribal leaders there, and three of them were Pawnee. So five and four of them were...
Yeah.
Yeah. And so very, very, they were disappointed in the participation, you know, from the tribal leadership, but, you know, the Pawnees were there, and the Pawnees spoke, and hopefully offered some encouragement and things to them. And so we'll have to look at this Oklahoma Council for Indian Ed and see if that's something that we would want to be involved with or not. And so, good meeting, they had some good things that they shared. I think out of all the national meetings that I attended, I think they had the most negative outlook on their budgets and things. They talked about 30 to 60 percent cuts that they're anticipating, and that they told their folks to get ready for in Indian Ed, and that's just devastating, you know, that's devastating to so many in the Indian world. But, you know, everyone's trying to shore up and trying to, you know, have to be. And hopefully, our President-elect, that those in Congress will be able to really advocate for Indian folks. And once again, it's a trust responsibility, it's a treaty responsibility, it's not free anything, it's not free education, it's not free health, it's not free anything, you know. All of these things have been negotiated, you know, by treaty. The federal government has a trust responsibility to Native Americans. And so, you know, we are, we in the Indian world are looking for our allies, you know, in Congress, looking for those who will help us in our efforts as we try to remain sovereign, try to stay, you know, and help our Indian people the way that we do. And so, so right now, everyone's kind of in a wait-and-see mode. Everyone has submitted budgets, everyone has submitted, you know, plans for this new year, but come February, when the President will put out his budget and put out, you know, his plan for the country, then we will see, you know, what is and what will be, what will be. And so it's up to us to be vigilant, up to us to continue to do what we can to advocate for our Indian people. So that is my report, are there any questions? Okay, if not, we'll move to item number seven, which is the Pawnee Business Council Travel, nope, Pawnee Business Council Committee and Travel Reports. And nephew, start with you down here, if you have any.
Good morning, everybody. Everybody, you have to excuse me a little bit, I'm one of the ones who's talking about kind of a little bit under the weather. No, I was a lesson in addition to these Oklahoma Council on Education, I went from place of Treasure Thompson, she was an able-bodied, so she asked me if I could go, and so I went, so got there late in the night. And I went to several classes, I went to the Parenting and Baby Cultural Responsive Tribal Educators, and also went to become a suicide prevention gatekeeper, and to a something about, I forgot what it was, about history and culture of lacrosse. The one that I found the most informative and the most, that I took away the most information from was the become a suicide prevention gatekeeper. The presenter was Courtney Yoher, he's part Pawnee, and he's been working with mental health issues and suicide prevention for several years now. And so he had a system that they had in place that kind of made me wonder if the Pawnee Nation could look into something. It was free, you know, and there were several different people there, attendants, tribes, good examples, he had asked for participation, you know, there was just a few people that spoke, you know, and just because he knew me, I guess he called me out a lot, you know, special, had to answer some questions and things like that. But I think a lot of the issue is that, you know, here in our community, you know, we did not think of it as being an issue, but, you know, we all know that we've heard stories about different, maybe individuals or youth that have talked about it. I know it's kind of in society, it's kind of taboo, we don't want to admit it and stuff like that, but I think as us as leaders, we need to look into trying to offer, you know, some kind of help of any kind to help prevent this, because, you know, especially the youth, there are future. And so he had a real good presentation, I've got some information that, you know, maybe I'll talk with Andrew about, you know, there's websites, it talks about how to talk to someone that's in that kind of state, or to help identify, not just youth, but individuals, you know, adults as well, you know. And they have what they call a gatekeeper, you know, and it's for anybody, it could be police, it could be teachers, it could be just individuals, you know, it could be us as council, it could be, you know, our chief council, it could be just people, just record people in the tribe, that if, you know, if there was something that people knew about or, you know, something like that presented itself, that there would be some people available to help talk to this person, you know, and help them to seek the help that they need, you know. And it's all not just about hospital-based or anything like that, it's all using what we have here that would be available to us, not only, you know, hospital or whatever, but cultural things as well, that's, you know, me being really involved with our culture, you know, that's something that I liked about it, that we'd be able to utilize things like that within our tribe that maybe it helped them to feel like they're a part of something. So for me myself, that's one of the, I guess, presentations that I really did enjoy. I was kind of unsure about what all was going on, I know that they had some kind of a meeting that was supposed to be for the elected officials, and then I think it was Leanna that said that Bruce was going to go, so I figured that was how it was on behalf. And there were some other meetings that went on, so I didn't get to sit down in the, first the roundtable discussion or whatever, because I didn't know we was all, we was all to be a part of that, you know, I just thought it was just you. But myself, you know, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, you know, I have a big problem with the state, you know, that's all the monies that we give, all the tribes that gives to the State of Oklahoma and gaming, and yet we're still having to help, you know, our local school. And don't get me wrong, I say that, you know, not saying that I don't want us to help them, but, you know, we give our spare share of money, you know, through our gaming to the state, you know, in turn, we're still the lowest in education, you know, in the country, you know, I don't think that's right, you know. So I have a big, you know, concern about that, and curious to see, you know, what these state officials, you know, have to say about that and stuff. So hopefully one of these days, I know that'll come out, so that's all I have. Any questions?
All right, well, thank you. That's Amy.
What was the name of that presentation?
What's that? The Oklahoma Council for Indian Education. I too, I've never heard of it either.
Yeah.
It's my first time hearing of it.
I don't have a report.
All right, Darrell.
Good morning, everyone. Yesterday, well, I could thank the council for allowing me to attend the parliamentary procedures sponsored by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Regional Office in Manadarko. Didn't know exactly what to expect, other than how familiar meetings, which it was about, but it covered a lot about our constitutions. It was a strong effort, it was much deeper constitution, line by line of what, how to go, because it's all, everything to conduct tribal business should be in the constitution. And I saw a lot of weakness in our own constitution, of course, I had a copy of our constitution, I was going along with our constitution, and what he was presenting, but the presenter was Mr. Charles Tripp, an attorney with, geez, with the legal advocates for Indian country. He's an attorney, goes around and puts on these things and represents tribes, tribes and individuals. But he's, like President Pratt said, and others have said, there is a big concern about this upcoming administration of Trump coming in as our new leader. He emphasized getting our, not Mr. Trump, but Mr. Tripp emphasized strengthening our constitution. I saw some witnesses in our constitution, I was, like I said, I was going along with what he was presenting and what we have, and I will get, when we do have our strategic planning sessions with our constitution, I will bring out the details of that in those meetings. But he emphasized, we've got to strengthen our constitution, because we don't know what Trump has on his mind concerning the Bureau of Indian Affairs. He's got a, appointed, I believe he's a senator from Montana, but we don't know what, I don't know who he is, I haven't looked him up to see what his background is and how he relates to those, how he does, how he works with those tribes in Montana. And so, Mr. Tripp emphasized, we've got to strengthen our constitutions, because we don't know what Trump is going to do about sovereignty, does he recognize sovereignty, does he recognize treaty rights? And we don't know which party is going to go, so we must be prepared. I think Mr. Tripp brought that up about three times throughout the day, about we must be ready for whatever Trump throws at us, or we don't know if he's going to work with this, because all these people he's getting into office are, they're not favorable to the Indian nations. But it was a very, I thought it was a very good meeting, and I was glad the council that allowed me to attend. And like I said, I'll give more details on our constitution and what was presented at our next constitutional revisions. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Angela?
No, I don't have any travel report.
Okay. Leanna?
Good morning, everyone, it's good to see you crowd faces out there, normally it's empty. Okay, let's see, see where I am. I attended the councils, the Business Council and the college, a joint meeting, and there was a good turnout. We just had three board members, but we got a lot discussed, and the, I believe, she is the current president, I guess, acting president, Cordelia Klapp. Anyway, she's the one in charge, I guess, and so she, she listened to the council about several items, and she's going to take it to the Board of Trustees to get things figured out and report to us back in January. Let's see, I also attended the OC conference, I do know all about it, because I have been in education teaching the past, since 19, I don't know, anyway, OC has been around, has been around for, since 1984. It is local, it is pushed by dedication, dedicated, passionate teachers, Native Americans. And I don't know if you all noticed, you who went there, but you saw them out there constantly talking to everyone, they are very passionate. I attended, well, the general session started with Dwight Pickering, who is the, does anyone know who's tied it for sure? He's with the Oklahoma Indian, do you know?
Myself?
Yeah. I can't, exactly, Oklahoma Indian?
The Office of Oklahoma Indian.
The Office of Oklahoma Indian Education. He's designated as a liaison for Indian.
Okay, okay, okay. Anyway, he spoke to us at the beginning, and this is a couple of comments he said concerning the new, the elections and everything. He says, "We will do what the law says and we'll make it the best Indian education that we can." He said, "You do what you need to do to educate our children," and you notice that we had just the Pawnee Nation representing, the tribal leaders for the whole state of Oklahoma, so that's where we're starting. "We have had barriers before and if they are presented in front of us, we will overcome them again the best we can." So that really made me feel good. That was a good positive comment. He is an advocate of Johnson O'Malley program, the JOM program, which works, they work close together along with Title, what is the other, Title VI?
It's gonna be Title VI.
Oh, that's right, Title VII, and it's changing. Okay. He talked about the way to go towards education, educating our Indian students is through tribal charter schools. He said that that way we can, we will, we can, we can set the curriculum to be culturally defined to our tribe. And then he, he said it doesn't matter what it's gonna be like. We've done without before, before the new elections and we have seen changes in governments and they really don't matter to us because we're gonna move on. And he said, "We will remain in education and do the best we can regardless of," I like those words to end on because that's what it's gonna be. I also attended Coa's One-on-One Strategies for Success. I found out that seventh graders can start taking the ACT test and work from there. I think it's, are you familiar, Duana, the Duke ACT test? Okay. But we can find out more. And I also found out which work came right along with what the tribe is doing right now because she also said that the Oklahoma 529 Savings Plan is the way to start saving for your children, to have the funding for them when they start college. And I don't know if anyone's spoken on this, but the, what is it, the elders program had someone come in, do you know where they came from? Exactly? She came in, I can't, oh, Native American Coalition? I can look it up if you're interested. Anyway, she came to present to the grandparents that are helping out with their grandchildren. She has a donation, donate, a group is donating a hundred dollars for each of the grandchildren. You just have to fill out probably a dozen pages, but they will deposit that in the five oh nine savings, 529 Savings Plan for your grandchild to get it started. In her tribe, they also have a extracurricular scholarship funding, which would, maybe someday we can have that for our tribe too. I also attended Preparing Innovative Culturally Responsive Tribal Educators Workshop that was presented by Southeastern Oklahoma State University, Dr. Crystal Jensen. She is teaching student teachers, training student, Native American student teachers to concentrate on culturally and sensitive curriculum, focusing, curriculum focusing on learning styles, integrating cultural components into traditional curriculums, Native American student persistence supports and instructional technology classroom. It really sounded interesting. It is every step of the way she's using technology and I for one have not been trying, getting involved like I should. After her workshop, I'm gonna give it a try a little more. I'll quit complaining. Angela? I'll quit complaining about the computer and technology and all that. I will try harder.
Okay.
I'm gonna look, you're...
I'm having a problem.
She did it.
Jumped over here.
Okay, let's see. Well, if you're interested, of course, I don't know if you can tell, but I'm passionate about education too. Oh, we also had a session from, from the National Indian Education Association, Onaway Rose, she's from Oklahoma? Still well or?
Her parents live in Ramona.
Oh, okay, yes, that was really nice. She is pushing for native control, tribal-driven education, so that's the direction we need to go. And she's also pushing for NIDA Hill Day, February fifteenth and sixteenth in Washington, DC, to be visiting with all the legislatures, legislators. Okay, one more. Using children's literature to guide science inquiry, K-35. This is pushing the STEM, science, technology, engineering and math. And it was really good, I enjoyed that. She, oh, I brought the catalog and I'm glad you're here, Duana, I'll let you have it because it's, it just provides a lot of ideas. I told her I was excited to give it to you. I also met with Jonathan Greker with the Institute of American Indian Arts. And his, his, right now they're having a two-week summer workshop for, I think it's juniors and seniors, that it's free, all you have to do is fill out the applications of your center. And the Oklahoma School of Science and Math School in Oklahoma City, they are having a competition for sixth, seventh and eighth graders on the pass objectives. They're also having a sophomore preview day and they also sponsor a virtual school. Anyway, here's some information on all this. I don't know that she named how many Native Americans have attended and graduated from the OSSN. It's quite an elite group. And so I will add that my niece graduated in 2011 from here and she just graduated from US, University of Southern California in May. So it is a good program and so I'll share this with you too, or anyone else who is interested. Let me see if I did anything else. Oh. If you're interested in education, the, on February eighth, the Oklahoma Advisory Council on Indian Education will be meeting at the Sepulte Indian Education Office. She said anyone's invited, February ten. Let's see, I can't read my notes. February fifteenth and sixteen is the NIEA Washington DC, and in Washington DC, and meet with national legislators. She offered, what was it, free registration to the tribal leaders if anyone would be able to go. And I've already talked to her and I've already heard from her contacting the NIEA. NIEV is April twentieth. The deadline for, and this is through the OC, and it's the deadline for the Oklahoma Indian Student Honors Society, which, which the students are selected, beginning with a 3.9 grade point average for high school and college, and the deadline is March tenth. The Johnson O'Malley Conference is April tenth and eleventh. Oh, and the honorees, they honor the Teacher of the Year, Educator of the Year, Student of the Year and Parent of the Year. I meant to bring that pamphlet, but the Parent of, Parents of the Year were Pawnee and I meant to get a picture and I have it someplace, I'll let you know later. But anyway, I was proud that they represented us. Hopefully we can get more to do the same thing. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Leanna. Move on to Donna.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome our new staff members, Maggie and Lorna. I attended the joint meeting with the Pawnee Nation College and I think we made some good progress on getting out of our impasse with them and moving forward. And so that was, that was a good productive meeting and I look forward to more meetings with them. We had an HR meeting and we developed a policy and it's on the agenda and we'll be getting to that later. I did attend the Oklahoma Council on Indian Education and I attended the same meetings that Leanna, Bruce and Adrienne reported on. I attended the Prepare and Innovate Culturally Responsive Tribal Educators Meeting. We come as a side prevention gatekeeper. I attended the Northeast Regional Caucus where they elected or nominated officers to serve and I attended the tribal leaders reception that evening. They really did want tribal leaders there, the chair, I'm not sure what they call the Caddos, if it's president or chair, she was there also. The Pawnees were very well represented and not just council, we had educators, Pawnee educators that were there like Lillian Williams, who's been with the Tulsa Schools for years and Gwen Chantona and Janice Fields. And so it was good, it was good to see so many Pawnees there and visible. I'm not going to repeat any of the workshops, any information on the workshops because I think that Adrienne and Leanna did an excellent job in describing. They did, you know, I started to say that they wanted tribal leaders to attend these meetings because they want us to, you know, help influence legislature for them and promote education. During that, during that reception, President Pratt recommended that they just go ahead and schedule quarterly meetings and they took that as a good recommendation and said that they would do that. And that way tribal members can, I mean, tribal leaders can, you know, schedule it and hopefully it will increase the attendance. One thing that Onaway Rose spoke about was the privatization of Indian land and it's very scary what they're talking about and she said that they want to use allotment as the model and that is extremely scary. So we have to be very vigilant with the new administration and to know what's coming up. She did encourage anybody that's interested to apply for positions in DC. She said they have over a thousand positions that they're gonna be filling because, you know, they thought that the election was gonna go the other way and so now they're scrambling, you know, to fill positions. So she's encouraging, you know, people, Indian people and also if you know Republicans that are Indian-friendly, Native-friendly, you know, to encourage them to take those positions. But that's it, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Can I ask one more thing? I did sign lines.
No.
But this is important. It's the annual awards luncheon and the Oklahoma Indian Parents of the Year were Daniel and Gina and Jim. I'm not sure what family they're related.
Your family.
The Jim family, yeah. I didn't get a chance to talk to them, this is quite crowded. But I will find out.
I want to make a little comment about what Donna and Darryl had talked about, you know, about me and this new election, you know, that's leading to happen here next month, you know, I think that what Charles Tripp was talking about is very true and I often think about, you know, myself, you know, about our people, that we really need to be proactive with this new administration coming because we don't know what's gonna happen, what's gonna take place. But one of the things I feel like is that, you know, we need to look at things where maybe, you know, our sovereignty can be attacked or whatnot because, you know, let's be proactive instead of waiting for something to happen, you know. And for us as our nation, as our tribe, you know, we need to really sit down and look at that because we don't know what's gonna happen, you know, and it's, to me, it's a really worrisome time, you know, so I'm hoping that maybe in the future here we can all get together and, you know, kind of start making, sharing out some ideas with Andrew and Dawn and, you know, kind of look at a few other tribes we're worried about too as well and maybe, you know, kind of go along on that. So I, you know, I just wanted to just, you know, support what these people are saying, you know, and I hope us as a nation that we do try to do that, you know, be proactive in that.
Well, that word, that word privatization, privatization is a fancy word for, we're gonna take, we're gonna take, we're gonna take your land, but we're gonna take it legally like they've always done. So, you know, that's, that's the big battle, you know, before the Indian nations, you know, with this new administration. But nephew here is, he's absolutely right and the others here, you know, we have to be proactive. We have to, once again, be at the table or you're on the table. And so, and that's, that's why I put, you know, on item number eight later to discuss is the Pawnee Nation letter, you know, to President-elect Trump and of just congratulating him for winning, you know, and putting that on record with them, that the Pawnee Nation has congratulated the man for being the next president. That has nothing to do with anything, it's just political, it's politics and things. So anyway, that's good and I'm thankful for the reports that were given and things. One meeting that I failed to mention earlier was I did meet with Senator Langford in DC, met with him, you know, about our lawsuit that we have with the BIA and the BLM and, you know, we just, we just, general, general conversation about that with him, also talked about the, you know, when I went down with Andrew and talked at the state Capitol about the earthquakes and so they asked me some questions and one of the questions was, has we received any help? And my answer was, no, we haven't received any help and we haven't received any help, but, you know, his office took it wrong, you know, because they had offered help but, and things, so he wanted clarification on that, you know, and so I clarified myself. I said, "Well, you know, they didn't, they didn't air the rest of my conversation with the, with the news people, news people who asked that," you know, I said, "But nobody has and still yet, nobody has." And so, you know, he wanted clarification, you know, on that. And then he asked me about the North Dakota Pipeline, you know, my views on that and things, and then he gave the government's views on it, on consultation and, you know, standing rock, not consulting and, you know, all of that until it's half a mile from their reservation, then they, then they step in and all of that and then, but I made this point to him, but... this point to him, but, they own the land, don't they have a say in what, what, what has, what, what can be done to it? I said, bottom line is, they own that land, bottom line is, their land, don't they have a say, you know, and, and, and so anyway, had that conversation with him and, and things. One other meeting there in DC, I forgot to say, and, and that was the Department of Education, when I saw Mrs. Washington and, and her supervisor, Ms. Utz, and we discussed Pawnee Nation College and, and just voiced our concerns, voiced our concerns and, and things, and they listened, they listened to our concerns, and so we're moving ahead, moving ahead with Pawnee Nation College and hopeful for, for good things in there. All right, well, if that's it for that, we will move on to item number seven, Pawnee Business Council Travel Requests, any travel requests, start with Adrienne. Amy? Carol?
No.
Adrienne.
The only request that I have is for my duties as the TBIC representative, I want to go ahead and get those approved all at once for the upcoming year. The first meeting is in February of 2017, the next meeting is March of 2017, May of 2017, July of 2017, and November of 2017, and these all are reimbursable by the BIA.
Tell them what your duties are there.
I serve as the Southern Plains Regional Area, Region Representative, myself and Ronnie Thomas, who is with the tribe in Texas, and we are, we represent all of the Southern Plains Region in regard to the tribal interior budget formulation process, and any other budget specifically related to budgets in regarding the Bureau of Indian Affairs. We, it is a, to me, it's a very strong budget council that has a lot of input and a direct line to the Assistant Secretary for Budget Formulation, and what goes in as far as priorities up to the president's, what's included in the president's budget two years out. So it's very important, and it's work that we do, and we, I represent the Southern Plains Region, which represents 24 tribes in, in Oklahoma, and there's also, there's 12, 12 other regions, I believe, that are represented on that council by two, two representatives from each region, so I, they, they meet quarterly, and they have some other special meetings. I believe the February meeting is, you know, for the transition, looking, you know, what our priorities are for the transition in Trump's administration and how we're going to deal with that. And I'll just have to share with you, you know, when I was, I was there in November on Election Day, and I had to jump through several hoops to get my vote, and I paid $24 because it had to be at the election, I did absentee ballot, and I wasn't sure it was going to get there, so I had to pay so that my vote would get there, but anyway, I was there in DC when that was happening, and, you know, I, I went to bed, and I had to wake up every hour and check the votes, and seeing that Trump was winning and get, have a pit, something pit in my stomach, just like, oh my gosh, and then I woke up at 2:47, and that's when Hillary conceded to Trump, and I just had this sickening feeling in my stomach, in the pit of my stomach, that, you know, I'm up here away from my family, away from my people and my children, fighting this fight, and this man could come in and set us back 100 years, you know, but I'm sitting here, fighting the fight, and what am I doing here? What am I doing here, away from my family, you know, kind of just had that sickening feeling, but I woke up the next morning, read a scripture on my phone, and basically it told me that God's still in charge.
Yeah.
And no matter what, what, what I came to the realization is that Indian people are strong and resilient people, and we have fought the fight for hundreds and hundreds of years, and will continue to fight the fight, we'll just have to fight a lot harder in this next administration for to maintain our sovereign rights, to maintain our equality, and to maintain our treaty rights, and everything, everything that we have, like Bruce was talking about, health-wise, or all our, all our programs from IHS, all our programs from BIA, they're not just given to us, they have blood that was literally shared, shed for those treaty rights. My grand, my ancestors, all of our ancestors died in, in the walk from Oklahoma, from Nebraska to Oklahoma, bad, you know, all these battles that we had, that our Pawnees did to, to fight for that land, to keep that land, it's bloodshed, so it's not free, it's not free, and, and the mechanisms that we use, we talk about sovereignty and using the $638, yes, those are federal dollars, but they're treaties, they're, they're things that we fought for, that our ancestors fought for, so let's use those dollars to provide services to our people, and, and, and in a sense of using, as well as using tribal dollars. You know, when we had the discussion the other night about what sovereignty is, sovereignty is, is meeting every needs of your people, but whether it's through federal resources or tribal resources, we still should take advantage of those federal resources, because we, we have a, we, they weren't, they were not for naught, you know what I mean? So I didn't mean to get off or digress, but, but that's what we're, that's why we're in, that's why we go to DC, that's why we go and be away from our families for those reasons, it's not just to go up there, I could, I've, I've traveled enough in my career, you know, that I'd really rather not get on a plane or even be in DC, but I do it for our people, and not just our tribal people, but I represent all the 24 other tribes in this region, so it's, it's an important, it's an important duty, and I'm very honored to be in this position. Thank you.
Are those all at the same place?
No, they, they have one, majority of them are in DC, three of them, they have one that's at a tribal location.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I'll turn myself up, yeah. Oh, okay. Leanna?
I have nothing.
Donna?
I would like to request to attend the National Congress of American Indians and the National Indian Education Association, which will be held at the same time in Washington, DC in February.
I'm also requesting travel to the Presidential Transition, sponsored by NCAI, and this is all tied together with the letter and, and what I said earlier, and what Angela has said just now. Also, had a budget formulation meeting yesterday in Oklahoma City, and that was the last Oklahoma meeting, as we get ready to go nationally, and that budget formulation is in February. And I will, I will also voice along with Angela, you know, that these committees are, are important. President Marshall was on, you know, a bunch of national, national committees, and, and they still remember him as a strong advocate, a strong voice for Indian country, and the TBIC, the BIA part, that Angela's a part, is vitally important, and so these, these meeting dates that she has, and the meeting dates that I have as far as budget formulation, the national meetings especially, want to give council notice that, you know, we might have to move some meetings because of these national meetings, and, and right now, right now, especially this, this spring is, 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 in February especially, when the president comes out with his budget, then all of the agencies, all of, all, everybody's going to be scrambling, probably reworking budgets and reworking things and saying, you know, how much money is Indian country, gain, loss, remain the same, whatever, and so there are two NCAI, NCAI meetings, one in January and one in February, and then the budget formulation in February. Any other travel? Budget formulation is reimbursable.
Since Donna brought up the NIEA, I would like to attend that in February. I was going to request it next month, but I can do a motion. I'll example this.
All right, if there's no other, call for the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the travel.
Motion's made, is there a second? Adrienne, seconds. Call for the vote.
Darryl, okay.
Yes.
Amy Littleton, yes. Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Adrian Barbour, chief.
Yes.
All right, and thank you for that. We will move on to item number eight, TDC Report, Roger Smith and his sidekick. Not named until, hey, good to see you, Mike.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, I'm excited, I hope everybody's been good this year. I have a short report to give, and then I'd like to introduce Mike here in a minute. As far as reports to TDC, our next board meeting is this coming Tuesday, which is the 20th, at 5:30 at our conference room. Construction at Stonewood is moving along, you know, when you drive by and you look, a lot of times during this stage, it doesn't look like what is going on, because so much of it is in ground, siding missing, the footings have been poured for the most part, and so now you start seeing things actually going up, which is exciting, if I'm to start seeing that. The pace of the construction is going well now, things are moving along, everybody's happy with that pace, there is a sense of urgency, and they understand the reason for that sense of urgency, and so things are happening, they're out, they're fighting the weather, and so things are going well there. You will start seeing some improvements uptown, starting Monday is the schedule right now, in the parking areas at the TDC stores. First parking area that we will be prepared is in front of this one store, which is presently called UJ's, and then depending on how the meeting goes tomorrow, it's time to plan all of this, we may push snack impacts, parking area repair until after the first. Reason for that is we don't want to have to lose gas cells during the holidays, and so the cold temperatures are affecting that, and even though thermal blankets and those type of things are used on the concrete, it still takes longer with the cold weather for, for those things to pass the test, to be able to drive on again, but you will start seeing that work next week. I would like to introduce at this time Mike Henson. I know that most of, of the council and administration knows Mike, but I don't think there, I think there are some people that maybe have not ever met Mike. Mike is, is the other owner in Kudus, and the managing owner of Kudus right now, and I asked Mike to come this morning and to give an update of the construction project at Standing Rock, and also as an opportunity for everybody to make sure that they have met him. He is handing out a flyer of what is the proposed project at Standing Rock, and giving you the information and asking a question to try.
Who?
One of the disappointments, it takes so long for me to bring him to the council.
Good morning, everyone, how are you doing? I must say it's much warmer down here than it is in the north, but getting ready to wake up there on Sunday, so I won't take a long, but you know, it's certainly warm. I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with this project, so I'm kind of going to do a report of what it is. The team that I'm a part of is listed over here on the left, there's a lot of high-profile companies that are involved in this project, as well as some activists and other innovators, but essentially what, what, what transpired was the Standing Rock Tribe had to come up with a negotiating bid to work with the core engineers, and what they really attained was coming up with a secondary winter campsite for all the people that were down at the, at the main camp. You see that here, it's roughly 54 hours, and I've been up there, I've, I've still been on one here, I expended roughly 256 hours of my own time, almost, working not only with the design, but also being on site, digging holes, laying out, doing whatever I had to do to, to try to heat the weather, when the weather was coming in, it's going to be really a big issue. So needless to say, based on a lot of input from the tribe, a lot of the volunteers and donations from the images on the left, and there's a lot of donate donors, we basically come up with this site, and it reflects a lot of things that are important to the Standing Rock Tribe. Specifically, if you see in the center there, number one, that represents to them the most important component of this whole camp, that is their spiritual center, their, their, their spiritual leader, John Eagle, as well as some other spiritual leaders are the ones who established this one center for this camp, and then from there, we basically planned and designed out from that. For all, for all intents and purposes, other than being a secondary campsite for all the campers, this really is going to set a standard that we hope can be replicated throughout Indian, and what that will be basically is a green camp, self-sustaining, off-grid camp, and the Standing Rock Tribe, they do have an idea of making this indigenous embassy a gathering place for many tribes to come meet and, you know, talk about sovereignty issues, Indian issues, they want to talk about, this is, this is where they can do it. So you can see the main, the main center, that's where the Standing Rock will basically have authority over that area, all the other surrounding areas are for, you know, other tribes, there's, there's earth lodges under the big round dots, there's TVs, there's other traditional housing, you're not going to see that's roughly in the area number 17, it'll be, it'll be all cabins, long houses, any kind of traditional housing that the tribes want to offer in those locations, they'll build a building there. So with the decision by the core engineers to, you know, basically temper the cost of construction on the pipeline, the chairman basically called us, I think I got the phone call on Tuesday, I was in Minnesota, actually going to look into military housing for construction workers, because housing's such a big issue there, we were actually going to be living on site, so I got that call on Tuesday, basically the chairman decided to postpone the project until spring. Now, with that being said, the design is still going on, the fundraising is still going on, and it's actually, it's a benefit to me, because I don't know if they're freezing, they were asking me basically to do something that's almost impossible, which is Arctic Construction on a shoestring budget, just to fit our men out with the proper cold weather gear, not to get hypothermia, frostbite, frostbite's going to be at least $2,000 per person, and all of this construction work was based on, going to be based on volunteers. So it was, I think I got about 10 of you with white hairs because of this, but I felt I, I got to that point where I knew we would do it, had a lot of people come to me and step up and say that they want to be a part of this, a lot of volunteers from all over the country, carpenters, from, I've talked to guys from Boston, Vermont, all over the place, wanting to be a part of this, so I think, I think that if we're able to continue the momentum into the spring, we'll still have the Standing Rock Volunteers, but as I stated earlier, on Sunday, I will be flying back up there for meetings roughly Monday through Thursday with the chairman, the council people, IEDN, we had a lot of things we have to talk about regarding the funding, where do we put it, how do we save it, you know, et cetera, et cetera, so this could all change, this all could change, you know, all based on my meetings on Monday, I just really don't know. I'm just the builder on this, I'm the project director, Kudus is represented, we have a video hack on what happens in the design, the feasibility, if it doesn't make sense, I'm the first one to say this isn't going to make sense, uh, I'm the first one to say this isn't going to work, I've got a project manager's talking with me, um, so we look at everything to make sure that it's reasonable, even though we're trying to build earth lodges, we're trying to modernize them because they went on, went on the last at least fifty years and they already have some that they built elsewhere up there and are falling apart because of twenty-three, twenty thousand year old technology, you know, using earth and, and logs, it's just not equipped to have a, a very long lifespan, so we're making modifications to the structure and the overall design, I mean, there's actual calculations and everything, so when they have a big snow, we know that people are going to die and I think it's, we're building it like we, we would if there were no one building it, so that will give you a better understanding of what this is. So anyway, I just wanted to give, to give you guys an update on this, Monday is pretty tense, a little more after Monday, how this is all going to shake out, but right now, this is what I know, this is what I have and I just received this yesterday, a talk from President Arquitect, so, um, it represents even to their knowledge right now, what we think the tribe is going to do. So kind of, if anyone has any questions, I'm, I'm all, all ears.
Excuse me, how many acres do you say this covers?
This is roughly fifty-four acres, there's, there's additional land to the south, so you see this little river here, it's kind of an informal boundary line for the construction, but there's additional acreage to the south of that, that little creek bed, so it could expand.
I wondered what the demonstrations were, wind power and solar energy, what, 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 what is the demonstration?
That's, that's actually new to me, I'm not sure what that means, I'm, I'm assuming that because of, um, so many of our people that are donating materials, so just so you know, Tesla, everyone knows who Tesla is and SolarCity, uh, SolarCity is, there's another subsidiary of that now, so basically they're going to donate all of the solar panels to meet the entire energy demand for the main structures, so you see number ten, number eleven, fifteen and fourteen, those are actually building structures, there's going to be kitchens, showers, restrooms, uh, laundry area and SolarCity's going to provide all the solar panels that we need, now they could have moved, thanked the solar panels up here to number twenty-eight, I'm not really sure, initially, everything was going to be on the roofs, out of touch.
Well, if there's no other, uh, comments or questions, I would, I would say this, I, I was really excited to hear about the, uh, project, you know, um, upon a, uh, construction company building earth lodge in Sioux country, that was very intriguing to me and things and, and, uh, they said, yes. So, um, I'm thankful for the update and, and, uh, um, yeah, the core of engineers, eh, we'll see where all that goes, you know, and things and, uh, but thank you Mike, uh, for, for the update and, and Roger, you know, for, for, uh, what you all are doing, uh, getting our name out in a, in a positive, uh, way nationally, this is some great national exposure for our, our company, so really appreciate that, so thank you Mike. All right, we will move to item number nine, which is the Pawnee Nation College President Report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I believe you all received the update by email. We are, uh, start off with item number D that, uh, we're going to schedule, uh, four trustees will be on January third, fourteenth, you're all invited, we'll put a public notice out again. To remind you all that, uh, twenty seventeen, March thirtieth to thirty-first, Pawnee Nation College is hosting the, uh, Second Annual Tribal College Climate Change Conference.
Is the date again?
March thirtieth and thirty-first. And we're, we're going to try and have all the events here, uh, on the facilities of the tribes, we'll put a request in, and I know that, uh, required minimum, or I should say maximum thirty day notice, but, uh, if we have to relocate due to some event, then, uh, it's going to be a hard one to find a place, maybe a city in Pawnee will have some places to host some of the workshops other than the campus here and where the village counties, we're all cheering. A majority of this, uh, conference is sponsored by the Oklahoma Apps Core Program, out of Oklahoma State University and they'll be paying for these speakers and, uh, reimbursing for some of the facilities. So our college itself will have to come up with some funding for other items that are not germane to, uh, speakers, travel rooms, uh, for students invited to be, uh, spoken to, to Nation College and to mention Nation College. March thirtieth to thirty-first. And so due to that conference being at that time and, uh, the manpower impact it has on us, we're going to, uh, schedule our Pawnee Nation College powwow will be April first to fall this Saturday. Instead of having my staff work very hard two times within a month here, we'll just have the powwow tag on to end it, workshop, conference, excuse me. Uh, I've spoken to Mr. Evans, uh, he was going to do, come by this morning, I don't know if he came by your office or not, Mr. Pratt, but, uh, he was going to come visit with this return documents that he had and he'll need that by Monday the nineteenth, he would probably have his final report, we don't get the same message, I don't know, I'll let you know when I hear from you. We are advertising for a spring schedule, students can be enrolled, be down then, uh, our college will be closed, uh, following our, uh, our host, uh, college, Bay Home, we're going to close tomorrow, uh, because some people traveling downtown and then we'll, we'll reopen on January fourth. And certainly, uh, we're trying to, uh, Mr. Pratt and, uh, and I hope you're applying for NH grant, uh, it's a grant that's provided to, uh, community colleges, national elementary humanities and we're going to be networking with, uh, the City of Pawnee Historical Society, Pawnee Nation Historic and Cultural Committee and then, uh, a couple of theaters, so that we can try to offer some classes and create, uh, an offsite for this classroom of speech, to enlighten, or I should say, increase our humanities offerings in history, cultural and, uh, trying to create a, uh, don't want to try, but Journalism, Community Journalism Radio Project, that will be trying to coach our students to announce, you know, on the air, there's a big difference between a conversation you and I can have versus how you want to catch people's ear on the radio, so they'll take some background and training, most importantly, pronunciation, how to pronounce these words clearly, precisely and to rewrite news, uh, it's something that the radio station up north, one is the Ghee Z, the other was KI L I Radio and out, out west they have in Abog Nation, those that can catch their news and tidbits, um, the people bring up local news, but at the same time, I, I hear you talking about national events, I, I can come to this, me, I can read about it on the internet, but you know what, it doesn't affect our people until they can hear and it explains to them how it affects their personal lives, just that you're talking about this, this water project, uh, the left, but the, doing that, it, it is a proud moment, based on our histories of, of our peoples and that kind of history should be brought forward as well as the current activities and networking on a national scale should be brought forward to our young people, because I heard you all talk about education and education starts at home and sadly to say, a lot of our parents didn't get the education that maybe your parents, my parents, this team, they pushed it down to us to go on and continue. I, for one, my mother graduated Chillicothe, that was it, but she didn't stop talking to me and my brothers, sisters about college and the future responsibilities for ourselves and do that, education can help us become self-reliant, so those are the things that a radio station can't do for us, just as, uh, Leanne was talking about the co, uh, conference she went to and the things that were helpful there for parents, a lot of our parents are in hope, uh, counselors at high schools, uh, leadership at schools, if they can't talk to the parent about these things being prepared, then they're not working for their students. But those are the kind of things a radio project can do for us as well and it has to be on a volunteer basis, so we're going to have to put everybody in training, um, and we can find funding for it, so there's a necessary project, there are a lot of projects that I would like to do and have in mind, but it takes time and that, I, we have any questions, that concludes my report.
I have a comment, uh, I don't know, maybe a question, I don't know if I can answer it. At one time here at the Nation, I thought that we had a grant for a radio station. Wasn't it supposed to be utilized over here, back when my office was over here at the Rome Chief and they had that stage and they were talking about putting that radio station up there, did that ever materialize, did we not get that grant, was it just a thought? I thought we...
I don't know if it was a grant, I mean, I don't know that we had a grant specifically for that, but I do know that there were plans in place for the radio station, you know, in previous years.
That was through the FCC, whether or not they're after, ended initiative because when I was with NODA, that was very paramount in the eighties and nineties, that tribes could apply for a written license, however, it never happened, a lot of tribes didn't have the money or the funding, but at the same time, tribes could get, I don't know if the window's still open, you can get a limited area of radio, uh, with a five mile radius of your broadcast tower, that's it, it's limited, yeah. So that's a FCC.
I mean, what was the limit?
Five miles, yeah, and, and the cost there wasn't prohibitive, but you had to have, uh, buy the licensee from one of the radio stations to do it, so a lot of tribes went ahead and bought the radio station for its licensing and established their radio stations in that area. So there, there was the other avenue, it was more of an economic investment as opposed to community investment, but somehow FCC, they changed that, right, so I don't, don't know when NODA has their next workshop, but there's a component that they write to the association that works with radio and they always have this speaker, a gentleman that comes through here and speaks every conference, I don't have access to it.
You know, I'm, I'm always talking to people, something that would be, uh, in our area, not just maybe just the Pawnees, maybe area tribes, you kind of reinforce as well, because, uh, I think what kind of reinforcement is my, traveling there to Standing Rock, they have, uh, their own radio station there, I don't know if it's in Standing Rock, but they have that radio station and I listened to them, you know, while I've been up there, it was, uh, you know, it was, it was really, really neat, you know, they played all kinds of music, but they had news that, uh, pertain to natives, you know, not only was there on Standing Rock, but, uh, what other tribes were doing, uh, throughout the country and they had, um, talking about sports, they had a couple of guys that was on there that, it, what it really reminded me of is when you have a couple of people that get around somewhere and they just start cutting up, you know, laughing around and teasing one another, that's exactly what it was, mixed in with the news, you know, and stuff, and so it was something to really listen to, you know, they had all kinds of music, you know, it wasn't just one genre or anything like that, but I thought it'd be something, you know, that if us as a nation, we had something like that, you put all this information that you're talking about, college, you know, tribe, you know, sports and, and all that, so, you know, I'm all for that, get it, get it to happen.
One of the things that we talked with, uh, on the city side, uh, Mayor Sewell, is networking with him at, uh, the old hospital and this project, the radio project has come to mind because of the hospital's on Highland Hill and I think, uh, the internet provider based in Stillwater, rural area, I can't remember the name, uh, prevention or, anyway, they're, they're interested in Stillwater to put their tower at that old hospital and that would be a fine place for us to have the classes there as well as we're looking at, we're networking with Bay Home to do an early childhood education project, teaching project, to teach teachers to get certified as well as AA and they would go off their bachelor's to Bay Home, so at the moment, we're in discussions with, uh, Osage Nation and, uh, Bay Home to establish Osage Nation's early childhood program as possible educational sites, we would send a teacher there, they would be teaching at a time convenient for their employees to get their certification and then to move into our classes to get their AA and then stay with Bay Home to get their BA, but it's up to the individual because of their time in homes, the work of the day, what's their free time to take classes and a lot of our parents themselves, still working out that little system there with, uh, Bay Home and Osage Nation, so we'll keep you updated here since we get something working, so the radio project will help us pull out of, uh, speech and presentation, uh, you know, skills to get funded.
One of the curious things I've got about that hospital, if there hasn't been, uh, some of the aspects.
They have the funding to do that, when they start, I don't know, it's the city's timeline, but Mr. Sewell was told us a month ago that they got this approved for the management, so when they start that will be their time.
All right, well, thank you, oh, got a question over here.
Last time I was in DC, uh, with the, uh, the last time I was in DC was tribal leaders with, uh, Obama called us together, I spoke with a man from FCC, uh, Mr. Blackwell, he said there were still the opportunities for tribes to get the radio stations to the five mile limits, uh, Mr. Blackwell, and I gave that information to Eric, that Eric had moved going down, I take care of it, started working that for Pawnee Nation, because that was one of the things, when I came into office, if you remember, I wanted a radio station, that was still available three years ago.
All right, well, thank you.
I have a question, um, he's, on his, um, report, he's requesting a letter of support.
Yes.
So do we need to vote on that, it's not on the agenda?
It's up to you all, how you want to do it.
When, when are you putting it in?
Uh, the application's due, I believe, uh, January sixteenth, thirtieth, the last part of January.
Okay, I bet you requested it on Monday, for Monday.
The twenty-ninth, I, I'm sorry, I should have changed it, changed that to the twenty-ninth, so now that you can discuss it, or it's just a general letter of support, you know, I don't know if you need to vote on that, it's up to you.
Uh... Did you just need a general vote? General vote?
Yeah, just a general vote of support for that grant for the Pawnee Nation College and the grant was, what was it called?
National Down for Humanities Community College Initiative.
And what's the dollar amount?
Up to a hundred thousand, we're going to request the, uh, at least seventy-four thousand over two years, I should say seventy-five thousand over two years.
Is there any discussion on that council?
We'll have to amend the agenda, uh, to add it, to, uh, vote on for a letter of support, do you have a draft letter for us?
No, I can pull one out.
Why, why don't you do that? Yeah, get, get us a draft letter and, uh, and then, um, bring it back and, and then, uh, we'll vote on it, we need to amend the agenda to, to vote on that.
Uh, when is your next meeting?
It'll be next month?
Uh, earlier than that?
Yeah, uh, second, second, I mean, first, uh, second Wednesday.
Fourth is Wednesday.
Fourth.
Sunday.
The eleventh?
Fourth, uh...
So it'll be eleven?
Yes. I'll double check on the date of submission and the order, if we can wait till then, we'll have to put it on the agenda that time, I'll let you know if it's going to be right.
It'll be January eleventh, so, so let me, let me know.
All right.
Okay, all right, and if you, if we need to put it on, then, then let us know and we'll do that later on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, thank you for those reports, we will move to the ED report and our very sick... He's, he's, he's Marine, he's all right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm up on two legs, I'm okay.
But just stay over there on your two legs.
For the record, for the record, since, uh, you know, I'm not one of those Facebook Live people or whatnot, but since we're going to be on YouTube, uh, my dotty, Marcus Radio, this is his call, so, make sure that it goes out to the internets. You know, we had a lot of talk this morning about the new, the possible new corrections of the administration and the new administration and, uh, you know, I, I group, everything to say, uh, we, as a nation, need to stay positive and give these opportunities to educate the administration, let them know we're going to be partners, um, and that's the only way we can, we can afford, I, I can roll it on it, spend the next, you know, four years, hunker down, bunker, try to survive, you know, that's, that's no problem.
That's right.
So, we're going to forward to that, um, for any of these money, uh, other... For any of these money, other monthly activities, introduce Dorna Mae Baptiste and Maggie Rice, our newest employees. Dorna is our new, mind standing up, our education division director.
Princess Wave.
Yeah, Princess Wave. Our new education division director, we're very excited to have her as part of the team. She comes with a lot of experience, and so we're looking for her to right the ship. And she's already on our way to doing that, and, you know, we're very excited to have her. Education is one of our most important things that we provide for our citizens, because it benefits most directly our children. And so, welcome. And then- Absolutely.
I'm just happy to hear and represent the tribe, and it's, you know, it's an honor to work with your people, you know. Of course, it has its challenges, and we all know that. But I'm especially, you know, happy to hear at the top of the tribe school, I think if you have control of your young people, you have control of your future. And your sovereignty, it's an exercise in sovereignty. You know, I think this lawsuit is an exercise in sovereignty. So, yeah, I'm a hundred percent for it, and I would be happy and I'm passionate to, and in education, and I would support that a hundred percent, a hundred ten percent. So I was really happy to hear that, and I just wanted to let everyone know here that I've been out in Indian country, representing the tribe in Iowa. Tribe with the, up north at NOC, a meeting there, they got a grant. And also the Pawnee Citizen, Pawnee Nation, and Ducomsa. And out in Indian country, we have a reputation for our building. People say, you know, they say it in these meetings, that we have a beautiful education building. So I have to say, with, you know, with the report on OC, it's all really good news, you know. And we're leaders, we have a college, we have Pawnee Nation College. So I'd say we're leaders in education, that Pawnee Nation has that reputation. And so I was really pleasantly surprised to represent the tribe and hear these things out in these meetings in the Indian country. So, yes, if anybody wants to get together and start talking trial and charge school, yeah, I'm there.
And I concur, and I think the Pawnee Nation has a lot of weight with education, as evidenced by all so many tribe members getting run off and getting their degrees. And it's such a blessing to have a back like Ms. Megan Rice, to have her back, well-educated, well, whole tribe. Machines are doing NACRA documentation and, what was the documentation, and some specialist, I can't remember. Yeah, the NACRA, well, the NACRA board, I miss what we're called, big title. Very excited to have her on the board as well. You know, NACRA is one of those, one of those things that's near and dear to my heart, the integration issue. And it's gonna be nice to finally have somebody in there that can make sense of the pounds of paperwork that we have. And get an accurate inventory and catalog of what's out there, so. Want to say anything to you?
Yeah, just a word.
Absolutely, that is quite impressive.
Iowa, keep it a secret, everybody, it's good to be here. I just want to properly introduce myself and say good morning to everybody. My parents are Debbie and Lindy Rice, and Uppinlin Rice, and I'm really a good fox on my up inside. But I just want to say that I'm happy to be here, I'm really excited. I started this week, but mostly what I wanted to say was that I'm also recently appointed to the Pawnee Nation Museum Board. And this Saturday, we are really excited to have a community forum, a meeting. We're hoping to get the whole tribe to Friday, that's at noon, at the CRD building this Saturday. But we really just kind of wanna get the community's voice and opinion and hear everything you guys wanna, hear everything you guys have to say about a future museum. So that kind of really allows us my NACR fees at CRD, so I just want to say that, say thank you.
Good. So I'm excited, you know, for getting, continuing to get the Pawnee people back. That'll improve for us as a nation. On the administrative side, sit for the last meeting. One of the things that, you know, I'm looking forward to is the new year. I'm gonna start, and I thought my directors know, I wanna start implementing a lot of, not even many new things, but I'm gonna put a focus on some things that I still find a little bit lacking. One of those is our records management. We had a meeting yesterday with a gentleman from Armor Industries, he's a native-owned business. Met him at Oklahoma Indian Chamber of Commerce in Tulsa. It's a very interesting thing, gave us a sales pitch, but I wanted, basically, I wanted all my directors there to, so that they could start thinking about how they're willing to properly maintain a record storage and records management. You know, this came about after trying to look for a Business Cooperation Act that we looked for months. And it's, it's one of our laws, I mean, it's an act, it's a law, and we ended up finding it in a whole file folder in the property. And it was the only extended copy that we found, I mean, so, and it was our law. So, you know, that just highlighted to me that we still have a desperate need to ensure that our records are managed appropriately. The other thing that I'm implementing in January is a new way of doing audit memos, audit letters, column exception reports. We've developed a centralized system where directors, or whoever has to fill out a report, has to log into SharePoint. And do an official request for an exceptions report, and we will number that report and give them that number, and then they will fill it out. And I do this because it's becoming apparent that, you know, in order to clean up some of these audit memos that we get, it's, we, since we have no way of tracking them, I don't know who's more prevalent or prevalent, which division needs help, which direction or director or which program needs the most help, who's the most repeat offenders. It's very difficult for me and everybody else on the administrative side of things, because we don't have any centralized system for keeping track of this. I've made it clear to my directors that I am very serious about doing things the proper way every single time. And this way, it'll be more on them, it'll make it easier for accountability for us, the administrative offices. If we're handing out numbered exceptions reports, we'll know exactly who's been getting them and how many. And it'll go a long way towards accountability, which I know that the council is looking for nationwide, is having that accountability. Our lawsuit continues to make its way through the court. So far, we haven't had any action on it, because the federal agencies have until January twentieth to file their answer. But admittedly, they should get extensions and are granting extensions of time to file their answer. Once their answer is filed, it'll usually be associated with motions to dismiss for various reasons. So we'll be forced to answer some of those. But, you know, we'll take it as it comes, and we have a good argument, we have facts on our side. And so we just need to continue to prey on it and continue to just be truthful and honest in all that we do, and it'll work out. We also are finishing up a fairly comprehensive answer in support of our superintendent, John Lovecam's decision to deny a communitization agreement down south here upon the Simro River. And so we're gonna get that out, I think, this week. I did go up to Standing Rock. It's something I really didn't wanna do initially, but for various reasons, one, I just know who I am, and I didn't really feel like getting arrested. But one of the veterans called out, and I had other tribal members come up to me and ask me, as I'm a veteran, asked me if I was going up there. I felt like I needed to go up there at least to provide a veteran's presence. So I did, and I was very happy to be joined by eight other Pawnee relatives that were up there to support not only the effort, the code acts, I wanted to support our Pawnee veterans. And it was a good thing, I mean, it was, it was eye-opening from one. We had a discussion, I don't know if this was discussed at all, but we had a discussion on Saturday evening. And it was decided that, you know, we would break down camp. And we made this decision because we felt that we had done everything as a nation that we could do to show our support for those folks. And that I was, I was concerned, because we had just a few Pawnee folk that were staying up there full-time. And I didn't see anybody there that would be protecting them and their safety, ensuring their safety, and I worried about that. The camp itself had kind of been co-opted by a bunch of different organizations and people with different objectives and goals. And it made the situation a little staid. So we, we sat and we had a discussion. And I told them that when I got back to Pawnee, that would be my advice to counsel. Is that we, we've made a decision to back off now. I'm just talking from a nation's standpoint. We had a discussion with the relatives up there, it was neat to be called grandson by Uncle, and that would never happen in my lifetime. I wonder how many of my Pawnee relatives are spinning in it or anything. It was good, it was good. I know she gave us a blessing, she thanked us for all the effort that we did, and wished us our best. In the end, though, it comes down to, we have a fight here in our region, and I need to focus our nation's resources and efforts in the fight, because it's gonna directly affect us. So I'm glad, I'm glad I had to experience all the veterans, there were thousands of veterans, or thousands. But I think our time is through for the most part, now we're, if something else should pop up and our relatives up north call for help, we'll be there. Ensure there's some advice, but for right now, the way that it is, it's current, setting the environment that's okay for us to break camp and come home. Anyway, continuing to work on policies, continuing to fight ways to streamline our efficiency within the government. Still finding some areas that need improvement, but we're working on them. And, you know, it helps to have, it helps when you have outstanding staff members, they make it easy. So, do I have any questions?
I just had a statement, I wanna thank you for going up and representing us at Standing Rock. And then even for the decision y'all made, you know, because that was our camp and we were known up there and, you know, just wanted anything that happened there, we'd be a reflection of us, you know, soldier. So I'm thankful for the decision you made and just for making that stand for us and for our water and our earth and all that you did in representing us as Pawnee people. So I'm gonna say thank you.
I would like a copy of the response to the Interior Business Center, first round of questions on the indirect cost rate proposal.
Okay.
And keep me in the loop on that, please.
I thought you were, I'll copy, I'll get it to you. Yeah, we got those yesterday, first round.
Okay, thanks.
I just have a comment on where you found the document, that was the Archives Project.
Oh, was it?
That's the Archives, Travel Archives. And the philosophy at the time was not to throw anything away, the people we're working with, so.
And that's, and I noticed that when I got in this depot, because I had an office full of punch cards. But, you know, we need to, we generate a lot of paperwork now. It may have worked in the eighties and nineties and early two thousands, it just becomes too burdensome now, because we generate a lot of paperwork. And we just need to be sure that we're keeping track of everything, so. We're just gonna do it-
And then we're worried too about keeping them here since the earthquakes and everything.
I know.
And I know we were, we were in the process of setting something up to where we could have our information sit somewhere else.
Yeah.
So that it could be saved in case of disaster or whatever. And at one time, when I worked in the property department, we had ordered a software and a machine and everything where you could copy documents. And then you could download them to either, at that time for storage outside of your area. Our IT department set it up for us. So that, that equipment was down there, it cost money, you know, but they never were able to figure it out, set it up for us, so I don't know what happened to it.
And then we had a system, and I didn't mean to say that we don't have a system, I just think we need to make it a few more canisters, a priority, because we have a lot of documents that are floating around.
I agree with you, we're these days. And then, um-
Even though everything's supposed to be on the internet and email and wireless and all that kind of stuff, paperless stuff, we generate a lot of paper.
Yes.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Andrew. And, uh, he's been under the weather here, but I appreciate him coming in and giving his report and being here today.
Well, thank you ladies too for being here today, your words that you guys expressed, I'm glad, Don, I've never worked with you before, I'm glad that you're back, you know, and stuff, and so I'm glad you're here too.
And so we've got, the Attorney General's report has been submitted to us. Are there any questions on his report?
Mr. President, the answer to the CAA that Andrew referred to, his report, I have to complete it, and it will be going out to the BIA tomorrow.
Okay.
I have, I guess, some questions and maybe a few comments about this lawsuit that we have. You know, while I was up there, you know, up there at Standing Rock, we got a lot of questions, I did anyway, about this lawsuit, you know. And I talked to Walter yesterday, or the day before, and myself, you know, I don't know exactly, you know, what I can and can't say. I don't wanna say too much, you know, and stuff, so myself, you know, I'm assuming that, just even around with the community, I've been asked questions, you know. So I don't know if you guys have like a list of points that maybe, you know, I can share, I don't know, something that maybe other counsel might wanna know too. I don't wanna get too in-depth into it, you know, and maybe give away our strategy or whatnot, but, you know, if there was something like that that you could provide to me, I'd appreciate it.
Counselor, Adrian, and I'm like you, especially as the attorney of record, I can't say too much. But when people ask, I always tell them, but this is about two things, it always has been. That is that the BIA, BLM have failed in their duty, is there are fiduciary? One, two is that, and I still believe, this is very true, and there's a huge article in yesterday's USA Today paper. That this is about water quality and water, the quantification of the nation's water rights. Yesterday, the USA Today paper, it said that Oklahoma, on average, twenty percent of the water that comes out of faucets in every household, whether it's rural, urban, or suburban. Twenty percent has a lead excess, that has excess lead in it that violates generally EPA standards. Twenty percent. So number two, water, this is all about water as well.
Most of the times, I just, I just tell them, you know, and I can't comment too much, you know, I just give them a general, a general statement. But also too is that, I didn't know if you guys were aware of that lawsuit that that fracking company had in North Dakota, that they got hit with that, had a huge fine. So I don't know if you guys were aware of that, so I didn't know if anything up there might help us out or what, but I think they were hit with a two point one million fine, which is chump change to them, I'm pretty sure, so.
It'll sting, though.
Yeah.
It might be chump change, but two point one million dollars, nothing.
Yeah, yeah. But that's a lot, actually.
Just, just tell the truth. I mean, our lawsuit is based on the truth. I mean, it is based on our experience here, everything we stated in our lawsuit- Everything we stated in our lawsuit in our complaint is substantiated by the facts. It is the truthful thing. So, I mean, if your constituents ask you about your lawsuit, you tell them exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. Because it's the truth. I mean, there's nothing to hide and the petition is, petition is public record now. So that would be my, that would be my...
I don't know if you read my report, but I know I went to that Oklahoma Nation Minerals Council Summit. They had some EPA people there from region ten. And their people told me of confidence that the, well, wasn't confidence, it was pretty much out there. They said that the EPA director herself is usually briefed on this situation going on right here in Pawnee Nation. Every day or every other day, the earthquakes and the water is going up through the very highest level.
All right, well, thank you for those reports. And let's take a ten minute break. And before we start, new business. Twelve, which is new business. So we're going to start with item number one, approval, resolution sixteen one two five, election ordinance revisions. Are, are...
Are they ready? I mean, I didn't see a final copy of, huh?
The second copy in there. The first copy, I just found out that it was redlined, sorry, it was supposed to be. But the second copy after that is the final copy. And I only have some things in red and those were just for my purpose, to see if you guys keep them or not. But that's the final copy is the second.
Okay, and the one, is that the one where Sammy?
It has Sammy's revisions in it and has everything that you guys have done, just didn't have anything from the BIA. But the comments that she made.
The comments that she sent to us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, we met, when was it, last week? Was it last week when we met? And discussed this election ordinance?
Week before, okay.
Yeah. What we're trying to do is, is we're trying to get it on the ground for the election committee to start. Because we do have tribal elections coming up in May. And there's a lot of things that need to be done early spring. But the main thing is for the election committee to get familiar with the election ordinance. And, you know, with the assistance of maybe the Attorney General and things and, you know, get that on the ground and things. And so we met last week or the week before, I can't remember, but we met and we discussed and had the, I guess it would be like the final edits, final discussion, final things that we looked at. We were looking for red line, last, whatever, but this, what we have here is the last submitted for approval ordinance, correct?
I guess I'm still confused. The one in the packet that we have is the...
There's two sets in the packet. The first one was supposed to be the red line, the one that you guys were all working on, it was to show all the changes, the mark outs. The second one is the final, where I went through and adjusted everything. And then, like I said, there are some places that have red in them, but those are for my notes, so that I would remember which ones. When you guys go through the discussion on some of the comments that you had, to take it out or... Do you get what I'm saying? It's the final, but you guys still haven't made those decisions.
Okay, but does that second copy in the packet, does it have, is it red line to where we can just look at?
That one's not red.
Not, but the one before that is the one we need to look at and finalize those last comments, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Okay. So the first ordinance is actually the final one. And the second one was just actually the notes and...
Vice versa.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Vice versa.
Okay, that's just, okay.
So the first one has the comments, because my thing is that we don't, we need to clarify, are we going to call it an act, a statute? Or, or, or ordinance?
We had your question, you guys were going to change it.
Um, I would like a legal, a legal, an official opinion, I guess you could say. I don't really need official, but I...
I forgot to attach it also to my space and then he reviewed it and he had sent a letter.
By week, no. Yeah, but I will answer your question.
Okay.
And that is that whether you call it an act, ordinance, or statute, it all is essentially the same. They're all this one in the same end that they, once they are ratified by the Pawnee Nation Business Council, they will have the full force and effect of Pawnee Nation law. So it's to call the council on what word he would like to use.
Okay, my next question is, what do we call everything else? Because I'm looking for consistency. And I know we have a terror ordinance, I know we have gaming ordinance, you know. So what are we going to do going forward? And let's, if we're going to move away from ordinance, let's change this one, but let's come back and bring all those other ones back and change those as well. That's my, that's my opinion, I don't know how you all feel about it, but I'm all for consistency.
But why are we moving away from ordinance?
I think that recommendation has come from me because, yes, they all mean the same, but municipalities normally use the term ordinance. And I think that the term law or act is going to be stronger, just in our sovereignty, in expressing our sovereignty.
Is it?
I think legally, it has the same meaning though, right?
Legally, legally, it has the same meaning.
But what her, what her position is on sovereignty, do you...
I, you know, I, when I was looking at it, I was thinking about, well, are there any differences legally between the three, or is not? Then again, though, I do see where Counselor Donna is coming from on where this may be a slight or small opportunity to exercise sovereignty in calling it something else. So that being said, it could still be called the council, and if you decide to call it something else, it still carries the full weight of tribal law.
So what name are you looking at, Donna, or which one to change it with?
Act, that would be my recommendation, either act or law, either one.
And if we do agree to change it, I mean, I would go with act too, but, I mean, I, I'll go with the majority on this one.
Well, honestly, I didn't know that these were laws.
Oh, yes.
You know, because one thing, it went completely against the constitution. I'm glad we're making those changes, but still yet, because, you know, just, I would just say, anybody off the street, well, do you know that the ordinance is tribal law that, you know, so. So just with adding that on to the end of it, then people would know, hey, this is, this is one of our laws. This is a, this is a law that Pawnee Nation has and that we're supposed to live by. So, I mean, just because it was called an ordinance, you know, I had no idea that it wasn't a law. I'm agreement so that people would really know that, yeah, these are laws that we're supposed to go by.
My personal opinion on the, on what to call it, you know, Mr. Mason is correct. Whether you call it an act, statute, or ordinance, it's still the law. And if we need to, like you say, exert our sovereignty, my personal opinion is the term statute. That feels to me, it's just, I think more people are maybe more familiar with the term statute than they are with an act. I, I'm just more familiar with the term statute.
There'd be no problem calling it a statute because it's the same thing. It will carry the full force of, full legal force of any other Pawnee Nation law.
Well, who needs a vote on it, right?
Yeah, who wants act or who wants statute, raise your hand.
Oh, is that the thing?
Statue is the same.
Who wants act?
Can't vote twice?
Who wants law?
I think law means law, right? You know, it's amazing sitting here listening and to have to decide on what word is going to benefit us. And that's just proof again of how this federal government or how people can look at words and try to get things to suit their needs, you know. I mean, I, you know, I'm listening to you say that everybody has perfect, you know, or has good explanations of the statute or act. When I hear law, I'm thinking, man, that's it. I mean, but I, that's just me, so. I guess I'll go for law.
Andrew? It just should be noted that for sovereignty purposes, it really, it really doesn't matter that the names of these statutes and acts and laws and ordinances, they're, what they are, are a way for different sovereign entities to organize their, their operating legislation. So whatever we call something, if we're going to call it an act or a statute, wherever, we need to be consistent because that's how you codify all of your governing docs. And so that consistency goes from one administration to another administration, and that's, that's why they, that's why they do it. That's why it doesn't really, in essence, it doesn't really matter as long as we're consistent with what we call it. And that's the most important.
Consistency is good, but it's one of those four words we need to say. So it's really up to the council which one they'd like to use.
Did you, did you mention ordinance? Okay, that's mine. Just because of the consistency that we already have ordinances.
My statement was going to be, I guess, for all in consensus, ordinance was going to be used, but it's in the end, which I guess.
Well, here's the thing, is, is the reason why, once again, I'll restate it. The reason why we are trying to expedite this is for the benefit of the election committee. So that they can get going and things. Probably needed one more meeting, you know, to hammer out these names, but here we are. I would say just take a vote on the first part and then move on.
Well, there's several other...
Well, I mean, the first part as far as act or...
Oh, okay, okay.
Or, my other question would be to Cindy. I haven't even asked her yet. Can it wait till the eleventh? Can it wait till the eleventh? When are, when are you wanting to have your, when are they wanting to have?
As they want it to have as soon as possible, like January, we're really pushing it because they got to get their schedule of events and everything out, the first of January. So they can wait until the eleventh, push it that week, get orientated, and then go through the process of trying to, you know, rush to get things done, but...
Is there something else that I'm missing that, other than the name, is there something else that?
Well, there's, well, if you look at the thing, there's a lot of...
The red line?
The red lines, there's...
That was sent to just now.
There's section two, we need to identify the Oklahoma election ordinance of, there's two XXXX, I don't know what that is.
Is that a date, it's supposed to be a date?
I think it's supposed to be a year.
A year.
But that was whenever you guys first started doing revisions, and I wasn't part of the first revision, so I didn't know what it was. And it was just, that's why it was written in there, it's XXXX.
Well, we just started that this year, so.
So we were supposed to meet yesterday, when was that day that we canceled? For this final.
Well, last, now we were just decided to do it via email.
Yeah, we just could do it email.
And so you see.
And for the record, I'm going to say that a statute was submitted to me, it was told me, told to me that it was the finalized copy. So I don't know what's, I don't know what's going on.
Who submitted it to you?
So, uh, that's me exactly, officer. That was what I did, my opinion always. I mean, if you guys want to go back and amend some more, I'll take another look at the new amended version.
There's like six, section six and section seven, two, one of the election committee. And then section seven, post where, list places, these are BIA's suggestions. What I agree with, we need to be specific where we're going to post.
I would say this, it's not ready. It's not ready for us to vote on today. So, yes, Donna?
I think we may need to be open to have a special meeting, just to take a look at this.
I think we do too.
Yeah, because we need to.
Can we do it on the twenty first, since we're all going to be here for the, for the dinner? Is that amenable to everybody?
Good.
Right after the dinner, the elders' dinner?
Yeah.
When we're all sleepy.
Who, okay, let me ask this question. If we meet on the twenty first, who's going to be responsible for the final? To bring it forward, final?
Well, I think if we could just go over this one individually in email and say, and maybe we could all do and accept it and send it forward, and then Cindy could compile all those and then determine which ones are still outstanding and then send that copy out. And then, will that work?
Yeah, because what I'm suggesting is that we work on it somehow before we get to the twenty first.
Yes, we got to.
But that's what should have been done already.
Okay, all right. That we know, Leanna. So here we are. So let's, let's go ahead and do that on the twenty first. Call the special meeting on the twenty first.
Anybody want to meet before then?
I would like to.
I don't mind before that either.
I'm, I'm game to meet.
What day, I mean, I'm game.
Maybe on Monday or...
I could, I prefer the twentieth, but that's right before it, is that okay?
Because it's not a whole bunch, I don't...
Yeah, we could do, I could do the twentieth.
To get it up to par.
Okay.
On Monday?
The Tuesday?
On Tuesday.
Tuesday's the twentieth?
The twentieth at what, one thirty or two?
Yeah.
Two? Oh, okay.
I mean, that's, that's fine, if you guys continue on and just inform me of what, you know, what changes you made.
Well, let's, uh, let's, let's go ahead then, um, on the twentieth, at one thirty. All right? And then let's, let's, yeah, at the conference room, and let's call for a special meeting to approve the, uh, election ordinance on the twenty first. After, I mean. Election ordinance only.
If we could get that.
Okay.
Do I need to sign it today or tomorrow? Probably just for closing purposes? Okay.
So what we need is a motion to, um, table.
So moved.
Motion is made, is there a second? Adrian, second? Call for the vote.
Daryl Walker?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes, Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatterhorse Chief?
Yes.
Leanna Teter?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, resolution sixteen one twenty-five is tabled. Move to item number two, approval of resolution sixteen one two six, tardiness early departure policy revision.
So, so let me get this correct, now, so the twentieth, gonna finalize everything on the twenty first, it's gonna be voted on?
Yes.
Okay. I'll be here for the twenty first.
At one thirty, on the twentieth. Put that down.
One thirty on the twentieth?
One thirty on the twentieth, yes.
And then we have something on the twenty third, just whatever moves the special meeting.
And same time, or was it in the morning?
Uh, after the dinner, what time is the dinner, eleven?
From eleven to one.
Eleven to one.
Eleven to one. Hotel two?
No, eleven to one, but we'll meet at two.
Oh, we'll meet at two, okay.
All right, item number two. Resolution sixteen one two six, tardiness early departure policy revision. So you should have a copy of that. The tardiness early departure policy. Are there any discussion on it?
Is that the only change? Is just that unexcused, or hasn't unexcused, is that the only change?
No, um, they're taking out, uh, the part where, um, docking the employees' pay. Want to make sure that they're in, um, uh, compliance with, uh, FLSA. So they're taking out where they dock.
Okay.
Pay, and then they're just changing that, making that, uh, change to where, say, is docked or paid for, and just say, has an unexcused tardy. So those are the only changes that have been made to the existing policy.
Okay, and this is to get us in compliance with FLSA?
Yes.
Um, is that based on, because of the, um, Affordable Care Act or anything, it's just, or did they make it, I mean?
No, there's some new SLA, uh.
Guide?
Yeah, but, no, I think they've been, um, what do you call, challenged.
Yeah.
But the thing that is, is that this, this practice, um, uh, really is not advisable to, um, dock.
It, it was, it was mainly, most of the changes was, was about overtime, federal overtime.
And that's, and there's a junction on that.
Yeah.
But everything else on the, yeah, is still pushing.
But that was the main, the main part of it.
And I don't really think that this would be like, um, a, a new change to FLSA. I think this is, you know, probably in the existing FLSA, docking.
I think you're right. It's frowned upon.
Yeah, it's frowned upon.
Okay, we can entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Donna, any more discussion?
The only thing is, um, I just want to make sure that if, once council approves that, I hope that this policy is sent out to, um, all the employees in a, in a mass email saying, council approved this, this is the change, this is how it affects you. So that they are completely aware that any unexcused tardy cannot be made up. And now, I don't know if it's been quantified what unexcused means, um, to everybody, but, um, I just think that we need to, um, inform them that when we make these changes.
That they'll need it earlier with the.
Yes.
Okay, so noted by the ED? All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and second, a call for the vote.
Daryl Walker?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes, Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatterhorse Chief?
Yes.
Leanna Teter?
Yes.
Who made the motion?
Amy.
Donna Hare.
Okay, so, uh, resolution sixteen one two six passes. We move to item number three, budget committee recommendations, we go to, uh, A, approval of twenty sixteen property management budget modification number five.
What this is, is, um, property management, uh, received additional dollars from IHS to pay for, um, something that they, a project, that they got extra money for, and it's a reimbursable base.
The water well raising as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Water.
And to, it's a reimbursable, um, thing, so they're reimbursing this portion of it through this budget mod, adding four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Yes, and, uh, budget committee recommends approval, and I make that motion.
All right, motion is made, is there a second?
A second.
Daryl seconds? Call for the vote.
Daryl Walker?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes, Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatterhorse Chief?
Yes.
Leanna Teter?
Yes.
All right, so that passes, we move to, uh, recommendation B, approval of Standing Rock expense of four hundred dollars.
Um, this expense came to budget committee through, um, Councilman Spatterhorse Chief in regard to, um, closing down the campsite up there, um, so I'm gonna turn it over to him at this time.
Um, you know, as, as Andrew had mentioned earlier, you know, while it was up there, we decided, you know, and, and it's kind of mostly at most point, you know, had pretty much everybody that was there has been a part of that camp at, at some point or another in some kind of way. And with things that was going on and, and how we felt and everything, we, we kind of had a little meeting amongst ourselves. And we all, and asked, you know, agreed that, you know, our, our time up there, uh, we've, we've done our time, you know, we've done our part, you know, trying to help. And so we decided that, you know, we, we wanted to, uh, break that camp down and, and, uh, bring it back. And this was prior to, uh, you know, the, the, the decision that was made by the Corps of Engineers and by, uh, the chairman to, uh, uh, ask everybody that was, that, that wasn't sued to, to, to leave, you know. So, um, you know, that's one of the things I, I went to budget committee and had to ask, you know, if it was possible, this four hundred dollars would be to, uh, to provide gas for, uh, the trailer truck and trailer to be able to go up there, uh, loaded, take everything down, load everything up and bring it back. Everything else would be on our own, uh, we talked about, you know, trying to get the hotel room up there so we could get a good night's rest or whatever, make our way back. Or however we're gonna do it, get a good night's rest, go break things down and then leave, or, you know, however. But, uh, that would, that would be a huge help in, uh, uh, making that possible.
Um, Adrian, has a date had been set at this time?
We have, we have not made it, uh, said a date, but, uh, uh, interesting news too that has, uh, uh, come about as well is that, uh, I've been following and asking some questions up there, you know, the Corps had stated that they were gonna, uh, open up a dam and to, to start flooding out that, uh, that drill site, you know. It's not something that's gonna happen overnight, it's not, you know, everybody's gonna wake up the next day and it's gonna be underwater. But the water has already started to rise, if, if they have seen, seen something, you know, some, some changes in that. So where that puts us at, you know, on there, I, I, I don't know, um, you know, I haven't seen anything where they're telling people that, hey, you know, this is fixing to be flooded out by this amount of tar. But I know one thing is that, you know, um, uh, we've been watching the weather, and, you know, we, we did get hit by a, a snowstorm, well, by a snowstorm on the way back. But, uh, you know, if we could find an opening, myself, if we could find an opening in there to get up there, you know, maybe take a day or whatever and come back, would be good. I, I'd hate for something to happen where, you know, they say, hey, we need everybody out by, in the next four or five days, and then we're not able to do that or whatever, and our, our camp is the last one there. So, uh, you know, I'm all for as soon as possible, uh, weather permitting.
Are we tracking, um, use of the vehicles, are we keeping a law on our tribal vehicles? Okay, good.
And budget committee reviewed this, and we, uh, it was at my recommendation to go ahead and forward it on to council for their review, um, since it's, uh, out of the council's expense. Um, we, I'm recommending, if, if it's approved by council, that we could pull it from either rental or leasing or supplies. We have about a proxy, we, we're out of donations on the donation line item, um, but I think I could pull that portion of it from, uh, supplies or rental or leasing. If you all want to approve this, we do have the money to do so.
I was just gonna make the motion to approve.
Well, you know, uh, partly was thinking, you know, maybe we could wait till after the new year, but the thing is, is that the weather, I, I, you know, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm unfamiliar with that weather up there, you know, I don't know if it's gonna keep getting worse, or if it's just gonna stay the same, um, you know, I, I just think we just need to get our stuff out soon, you know, we just look at the calendar, look at the weather calendar up there, and it looks like there's some, a few good days, and we need to see about getting whatever we can to go up there, get into that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Donna, is there a second?
I'll second.
Amy, second? I would, I would, uh, add this, that, uh, we, um, take the motion and second and vote, vote on it, and then leave it up to the treasurer's discretion as to where to pull it. Okay?
Also too, it's not like it's something to need like tomorrow, but, I mean, I could, I could let you know and say, hey, you know, this is what we looked at here, these are the days that we're thinking about trying to go, and it's probably gonna be, I don't know, I just don't know.
Donna?
I recommend that you go ahead and invoice it right away, just in case there's that, whether there's something that we know about.
And also too, you know, we, we, we talked to the, uh, the Sioux people like he, he, uh, talked about. And I, and I told him that, you know, just because we are no longer there, you know, physically does not mean that we're still not supporting him. That, you know, we would still support them in our political frame that, that we can hire, that needs to be, if it's letters or something, you know, and stuff, but as far as our people being there, you know, that, uh, if anybody wants to go, it's on, it's on their own and stuff, but, uh, you know, if, if something happens again to where, you know, they need more people, then that's something we need to retain that as well. But as far as our part, that we've been doing, we've been there since August, and we've done a, I, I feel a, a really good part, and we've made, uh, but, you know, they, they really love it for us up there, you know, they're, they're really thankful, you know, they talked about us, our, 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 um, any, uh, connections that, that we had in the past, our history, and that how they had said that they, you know, they put all that aside, you know, and they're thankful that we did that too as well. Just like what Andrew had said, you know, they, they were calling us relatives and stuff, and that Sunday, I was, I was standing with David Ekahoff and a few others, and a man come up and, and talked about that, how, how he was really, you know, he was almost in tears, that he, he was glad that we were there. And so he was, he was thankful and all this, and so we, we made a name for ourselves up there and had a big part, you know, and that's not what we was intending to do, we just wanted to go and support, but for them and, and their tribe, our history, it, it was something, you know, so they were, they were thankful for that, so. Uh, you know, I just wanted to, to tell you that, you know, just because I'm bringing this up, as if we're totally done with it, that, you know, you know, maybe if, if there did letters, more letters of support or something, that, you know, we could be willing to do that.
All right, all right, call for the vote.
Daryl?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes, Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatterhorse Chief?
Yes.
Leanna Teter?
Yes.
All right, Standing Rock expense of four hundred dollar has been passed, we will move to item number four, approval of resolution sixteen one twenty-seven, one twenty-eight, and one twenty-nine, and these are appointments to the Liquor Control Commission. I had, uh, put out an email to council to see if we wanted to, uh, uh, vote on the four that we have. And the four are Muriel Rubidoo, Stephen Byrd, Ben Stewart, and Crystal Winholz. Uh, for these positions, we have created, um, a, a five-member standing committee, uh, for this, they, they used to just go by three. They had three, one resigned, so they ended up with two, and so we, we needed to get this commission, uh, going as soon as possible. And so, uh, uh, got feedback from the council, there was only one who, uh, stated that they, uh, would, would like to interview, and the rest, uh, who, who, uh, responded said, no, they were, they were comfortable with, uh, bringing these four forward. So at this time, we will bring these four forward and, and have a vote, um, for these, uh, three positions for the Liquor Control Commission. So, uh.
Vote for three?
Yeah, vote for three out of the four. And most of these, other than probably Ben, uh, we've interviewed over and over and over again, so I think, I think, uh, we kind of know who they are and what they. So just vote for three, and then we'll go with who's got the top three numbers. Crystal Winholz, Ben Stewart, Stephen Byrd, Muriel.
I'm just gonna ask this, does anybody know of any conflicts before we vote?
Oh, good question.
Yeah. Crystal is on what committees, does she on any now? No, she's, she went off of gaming. Muriel? Muriel's not on any?
Steve is.
Steve is on gaming. And Ben's not on anything, so the only one we would look at is, is Stephen, if there's a conflict of interest there between gaming and.
Does gaming and liquor have anything to do with each other?
No.
I don't, I don't see it.
Not any regulations that they have to monitor in regard to?
They, gaming's strictly gaming, that's what they're, the NIGC is what they're solely asking.
Okay.
Before I forget, Andrew.
Is that somebody? That's yours?
I heard Brian. Yeah.
Oh, is that yours?
Yeah.
You gave me yours.
I gave you mine, that's it.
Oh, it wasn't on that.
Okay. Okay, all right, okay, we're good, all right. Okay. How many times are you voting? I know, your ballot, gotta be different, gotta be different. She gave me a beautiful ornament, so I'm gonna excuse her.
Okay, we have one vote for Ben Stewart. We have one vote for Muriel Rubidoo, and we have one vote for Crystal Winholz. Okay, we have one vote for Crystal Winholz, we have one vote for Stephen Byrd, we have one vote for Muriel Rubidoo. We have one vote for Crystal Winholz, we have one vote for Stephen Byrd, and we have one vote for Muriel Rubidoo. We have one vote for Crystal Winholz, we have one vote for Muriel Rubidoo, we have one vote for Ben Stewart. We have one vote for Ben Stewart, we have one vote for Muriel Rubidoo, we have one vote for Stephen Byrd. We have one vote for Muriel Rubidoo, we have one vote for Stephen Byrd, and we have one vote for Ben Stewart. We have one vote for Ben Stewart, we have one vote for Stephen Byrd, and we have one vote for Muriel Rubidoo. According to my tally, Ben Stewart has five votes, and Muriel Rubidoo has seven votes, Crystal Winholz has four votes, and Stephen Byrd has five votes.
So it's Ben, Stephen, and Muriel?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so. All right, and, um, let's, um, let's start with, uh, resolution sixteen one twenty-seven, that's for Ben Stewart. Appointment to the Liquor Control Commission. Appointment to the Liquor Control Commission, so I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Angela makes the motion, and Adrian seconds. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walken?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatterhorse?
Yes.
Leanna T.
Alright, so Ben Stewart is the uh Resolution sixteen, one twenty-seven, we'll move down to sixteen, one twenty-eight. Stephen Byrd, appointment to the Liquor Control Commission, I need a motion?
So moved.
Angela makes motion, Adrian seconds. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walken?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatterhorse?
Yes.
Leanna T.
Yes.
Alright, so that one is uh sixteen, one twenty-eight, it's Stephen Byrd. Move on to Resolution sixteen, one two nine, uh, Muriel Rubidoo, and motion please?
So.
Okay, we'll give that to Leanna. Leanna's second. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walken?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatterhorse?
Yes.
Leanna T.
Yes.
Alright, so they, these three are appointed to the Liquor Control Commission, so good, so they got a full, full commission. Alright. So Andrew and I won't have to be going to the meetings anymore. Take care of it. Alright, let's move on to item number seven, uh, Expo Director, I've asked uh, they our Expo Director. To, to come, and, and uh, he's fulfilled that responsibility this last uh year, and uh, you know, you can go ahead and say what you told me.
Well, thank y'all, uh, I don't think I need this mic, um, as y'all know, I think our, our last director had resigned about in May, which kind of put us in a bind as far as my daughter was the princess, and so I decided to, you know, take it up, since I've been down there before, just at an interim, you know, because it was like two months before we had to go, you know, to the expo, the fair, so we did, and uh, and uh, kind of a thrown into a quagmire down there, it's, it was uh, two factions, you know, and uh it's kind of rough, rugged, because the, 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 the false one, I guess we could call it, it was a week prior to the original one, and uh so, you know, it was, it was a bad time, and uh, so we did, we went down and made our deal, you know, and uh so it, now, it's over, they found out, we got money still, you know, vendors still need to be paid, and we used all the money, they said, so now our, our treasurer has resigned, the board, on the board, the president is due to resign in, in February, he put his resignation in, it's February, but he's gonna try to do fundraisers, because he wants to get those people paid, but now, I've got, I've got a text a bit ago, that they want to have a meeting, private meeting, what they're saying, with all the directors, to go ahead and take the president out, and, you know, and that's what happened the last time. And so come, there was two factions to begin with, because money, you know, and the directors, they met like that, what I was told, and ousted that woman, so, you know, she didn't find it, you know, she didn't think it was right, so that's why she had their, her, her expo. So now we're back, it looks like it's back towards, towards that again, so, you know, I'll get you the next director. It was rough, I mean, I'm, I'm, I was, I went to about four meetings, and it was, it was rugged. So now, I mean, they don't, they don't have no leadership down there now, you know, they were trying to ask me if I would be president, I said, no, I, I can't go down there every day, be in that office, so, uh, right, so that's where we're at now, and, and as far as the princess, you know, she's due to give up her crown this month. And Mr. Morgan told me that, that he wanted the crown, and the crown box, because he had bought that with his own money, so, you know. And from what I understand, when he said that he, he had, he really had no help from the tribe anyway at all, so, you know, I don't know.
You know, one of the things that we talked about, you know, we had this discussion before, you know, uh, I, I, I know, you know, a lot of people around down there, now, you know, I'm down there a lot, you know, I hear all this, this grumblings that's going on, and then I had maybe to comment before that, we really need to watch ourselves, you know, because at that time, no one knew who was in charge, you know, um, but uh, there's a lot of grumblings going on, because they're still trying to have it, as they used to long time ago, and, and today's time, it, it just seems like it's, it's just not possible, you know, they want it to be a whole week, which costs a lot of money, which in the, the times in the past, they had it just two or three days, and it, you know, had a lot of, a lot of people, but, you know, there's a lot of uh, people not willing to they don't like the change, you know, they want to keep it original and stuff, so, and uh, it's always been a money issue, it's always been a money issue, and I, I, I hate to see myself um, our tribe be involved in something that we don't really have control over, you know, because a lot of it has to do with the tribes down there.
That's sort of had some, I agree with that, because a lot of it is with them tribes, like us and the Osages, Otos had just gotten invited back, the Poncas did as well, you know, they're kind of, yeah, you know, they're here, but they have more say-so down there all the other times, that's kind of what I see.
And, and, and one of the things I think about too, is I would hate to have a young girl be representative of our nation as a princess, and then to have to deal, her and family, or the, or the president have to deal with those problems that's going on, and under risk of, of not being anything, you know? And uh, to not have a, a full enjoyment of, of being a representative, how they should be, you know, I mean, no doubt that they would represent us throughout the state, you know, but to not have that actual advantage, you know, and to be, because I, I literally see them argue at, at the, at the highlight, at the, at the dance, they just argue right there, you know, and that, that's not a good thing, so. I, I don't know what, what the, I, I'm just, I'm just saying that much, I, I don't know what everybody's decision is, but getting around, Daryl, maybe you could add to that too, maybe you've seen it hurt someplace as well, so I don't know. Donna, you have something to say?
Uh, yes, just something briefly, um, I think there's been conflict and, and um, confusion about it for at least ten years, it's come to, you know, the council with the directors about, you know, the uh, factions and disorganization.
As a former resident of Anadarko, I've seen all these things going on, like Adrian said, arguing, wiggling, at, during the exposition going on, and a lot of uh, uh, infighting, people, uh, you got too many chiefs down there trying to be in charge, and uh, you're right, uh, the tribes down there have more control, we're just uh, Ponies, Osages, Otoos, Poncs, we're just kind of a token invites. My personal feeling over the years, watching it deteriorate, deteriorate every year is, as a nation, a Ponie nation, we need to back out. We've already did a part, years ago, when it was really something to be a part of, and it's, it's just deteriorated, it's, it's an embarrassment down there, it's just a little, a little ponewall. Some of the other ponewalls that are even bigger than the exposition, but uh, pers- my personal feelings that Ponies need to back out from there, and just don't associate with that, because it's all negative down there now, it's not like what it used to be when I was growing up, I was, man, I looked forward to going down to camping for a week, and just, I really enjoyed that, now, it's just, it's really nothing now. I think the exposition ought to fold up and just, just talk about their history, because that's mostly the, what I hear down there now, is from the people my age, or, or elders now, uh, talk about the old days, how it used to be, those people, tribes from all over the southwest, and the north, up north come down, and just really uh, uh, make it a something to be a part of, but it's, it's not that way, they're trying to bring it back, and there's no way, there's just too much infighting down there, and like Adrian said, lack of funds, they don't, they just don't have it, and like I say, I recommend that we just Ponies just back out from it altogether, and just
I'd go along with that recommendation.
Well, let me, let me, let me say this, uh, I, I knew there was, there was trouble when I got a phone call from the Expo Director, and then uh, three days later, I got another phone call from another Expo Director. What? That's when I called him, I said, what's going on, you know, and things, and, and uh, uh, it's, it's, it's a mess, you know, and, and uh, both, both uh, directors um, still have called me and, and uh, you know, want the support of the Ponies. I, I will say this, I am thankful, Pat, that, that you took this up, this last year, uh, you and Boo, and, and you all have represented us very well, you, you always, Boo always has, you know, very, just a, a very highly thought of young, young lady, um, and, and so, um what is your recommendation?
It's y'all's deal, man, you know, and you're, you're all the council.
But you don't want to do it no more?
I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, it's like I told you, it was just a
Yeah.
internal deal, whatever they're putting in.
I don't, I don't know if there's any action that needs to be taken, is there?
Uh, maybe just, just a letter to, to them, Ben, you know, we're gonna drop out in time.
Well, if we're gonna send a letter, we need action.
Well, then, then we need action then, so, um.
I, I would, I would say this.
Okay.
I would say that, you know, we, we tell them that, you know, we, we're no longer gonna be involved with the expo, that maybe later in the future, if they turn it around, if they get it developed back up again to where, you know, it's, it's uh, we see that it's a fully functional, something being made for us, that, and we might consider it at that time.
We, we can, we can uh, draft a letter that states that.
And as far as I know, that Mr. Gumbay is still to.
I was gonna say, but who do we send it to?
They keep Gumbay, he's still the president.
Send it to both. Well, it's, it's sad, it's, you know, that's, that's sad that we even having this discussion, but that's, that's how it is, okay, and so um, uh, we can take a motion to uh, send that letter? Anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Hold a second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. So we will send a, a letter. Thank you, thank you, Pat, for all you've done. Yes?
I would really like you to include what Adrian said at the end of the letter, that, you know, would
At, at some point?
Yeah.
Okay.
When they get their act together, we'll.
Um, I would, I agree, um, but two, if I was sitting on their side, and I got a letter from the Ponie Nation that said that, so basically, you're telling them fix everything, and then we'll come be a part of it, we're not gonna be a part of the solution, but when they get it all fixed up, we'll come be a part of it, so I just throw that out there, I just throw that out there.
That's, I mean, that's a good thought, too, you know, honestly, I just think we don't even have, need to have uh, a part of it, but I just say that because, you know, you know, they, they might get things together, but, but it's just like what Daryl said, you know, it's just them guys that, um, they asked, uh, I don't know if it was the Kylas or the Comanches, might have been the Comanches, they, they, they put a bunch of money into that to help to see it go, and they wanted all the power, they wanted all the control. Yeah, and then there was other tribes that, you know, but it's like, hey, we put in hundreds of thousands of dollars, we can't get involved in that kind of stuff, you know? So that, that was my thing, you know, and then the only way that they're gonna get that to go is if it's gonna be tribes, you know, to donate, or, or companies, or whatever and stuff. I mean, you're talking about they rent the, the, the fairgrounds all week, they went, after rent those buildings, individual buildings, um, carnival, you know, think about all of these things that, that, that they put out there that cost money, that they don't even have money to cover.
I think he had.
Prize money, and all that stuff.
The uh, budget he had for this year was thirty thousand for, for that row.
And that's, and that probably don't even cover getting the fairgrounds, I bet.
Yeah, I don't know.
Donna?
So I mentioned that this has been going on a while, and it was brought to us when Elizabeth Blackhout was president, and it was her position at the time, and the position of the council not to be involved, not, not have any involvement, and, but not even, there was no vote, there wasn't anything, they just said, you know, we're not involved in this, this is between the directors and.
Well, here, here's, here's what I can do, is on the letter, I would say for the Ponie Nation, for twenty seventeen, uh, we will not participate.
I would like to add something, um, I see something that has come, the, the goodness that has come out of it. I remember Boo when she first started, when she was first crowned, I don't know when exactly, but through the years, I have seen her develop. Socially, um, she has so much more self-confidence, I am so proud to see her, wherever she goes, she just shines for the tribe, and um, and she's proud of being Ponie, and she's done a good, she's a good representative for us, so I think that we might need to add something like that, how it has benefited our youth. I was one years ago, and, no dates, but anyway, it's that little extra something that gives the young women all over the state that more self-confidence in themselves and pride in their tribe.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you. So I will do that.
With that, all this being said now, so they'll, they'll never be a Ponie Nation princess?
Well, you know.
I'm, I'm thinking we could still have one, just don't send her down now.
Well, and that's the thing that we've been working on, you know, when Marshall was here, we talked about that, and I think Sammy was the one that was supposed to be working on that, for having that. We have our own Ponie Nation princess, and junior miss princess, you know.
And I've, I've been saying that I'm willing to help her, whatever, that we do need one, and we need.
I told her too, because she was like, I don't, I, all I got sons, I don't know anything about princess. I can actually, I got two of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll, I'll visit, but there's some more about it.
Okay.
About going on, too, as well.
I mean, I'm, I'm in a committee.
Yeah, I've always thought that we used to have.
Yeah, the travelers have talked about, they're willing to support it.
Traveler's princess?
No. They're willing, the travelers are willing to support a Ponie Nation princess.
So I guess she'll still wear the banner, Daryl, Christmas.
But I don't know how to, for her ring.
Yeah, I mean, all that needs to be done, you know. Yeah.
After Christmas, then, then she will go ahead and give it up.
I think she should wear it, how we, how we find, find someone else, I, I agree.
Or tell.
But she's still gonna have to find a crown, though. Does she will?
Can we buy it from him?
Buy it from, from his pocket? I can call him.
I want a receipt for it. And I, I know.
Eight years old.
I know he did, and the shawl too, I believe he purchased it.
Yeah, and the banner.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Maybe just give it back to him, you know, let him have no hard feelings, just give it back to him.
Well, we can get some money to leave the money.
Just to put it out there, Vicky said she would need a crown if you all want it.
Okay.
She wanted me to, she wanted me to mention that, well, today while I'm here.
Okay, good.
She gets off the table.
Can you, can you ask her to get us a quote, how much that's gonna be? Okay, good.
I don't want that too, you know, not to take away from that, and Bruce Caesar, another tribal member, he makes crowns for all the princesses, you know, he, he said once upon it's gonna get one.
Who said that?
Bruce Caesar.
Alright, well, lots, lots more yet to discuss then, unknown, on the Ponie Nation princess.
Will she mind staying in there, can we get organized?
Yeah, because she asked me last night, when she's giving it up, and I told her today. I told her, you know, I told her that you guys want her.
Well, are we all in agreement that we want her?
Yeah, I am.
Yeah.
Yeah. Might, might be having the same talk this time next year. Alright, Cindy, remind me on the letter, would you please? Okay, alright.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Alright. All right. Uh, let's move on down to item number eight, Pawnee Nation letter. Now, now, um, this, this is, this is, uh, what, what I have brought up. I've, I've talked with Andrew about it. I've talked with, uh, other tribal leaders, uh, about this. And, and, and what this is, 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 uh, a letter of congratulations to President-elect Trump. Period. Of, of just congratulating him because he is gonna be our next, uh, President of the United States. Uh, and, and no matter how we feel about that, and I know there's, there's a lot of feelings about that, and I have my own feelings about that. Um, the, the tribes and, and some of the tribal leadership that I have spoken with have, have voiced that their tribe is sending a letter of congratulations to President-elect Trump due to the fact that they, they don't, uh, want to be seen as a party that will not negotiate or will not be at the table on the events and the changes that, that may come. They, they want, they want the President-elect to know that that tribe, whatever tribe that it is, and in our case, it would be the Pawnee that, that, uh, we're just congratulating him and are willing to work with him, you know, on, on the matters that, that are to come to, to the nation. Once again, I've, I've used this before, you know, if you're not at the table, you're on the table. And so, you know, that's, that's something that, that I think would be politically beneficial to us as the Pawnee Nation. Um, just to offer that congratulations. Uh, I know other tribes are doing that. And like I said, they, they have their opinions of, 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 of him. Uh, however, they said, you know, they, they wanna be counted, you know, when, if there's a count, um, you know, and one of the things of, of our President-elect is, is, uh, uh, seems, he seems to, um, take numbers, you know, take note of, of opposition and those kind of things. So, so anyway, I, as the, as the President, uh, wanted to bring that up and see if, if, what's, what's the, uh, view of the Pawnee Business Council on that of a congratulation letter from the Pawnee Nation to the President-elect Trump. That was, that was hard to say. But it needed to be said. Okay, go ahead.
Well, give my opinion. You know, uh, I, I agree with you that, you know, we need to play that political field, I guess you could say, you know, and, and you're right, we don't need, we don't wanna be looked at as you know, totally against him, you know, because we don't know what, what that's gonna do with us, you know? Uh, but, uh, I would just say keep it short and sweet, you know? Leave it at that.
Yeah. Yes.
I understand the politics. Um, but I just can't vote for it.
Okay.
I have to agree. I feel that strongly about it. I mean, and, I mean, I, I, I see the politics in it, but I just don't think it'll make a difference on who we're dealing with. It may, it may not, but, um, I, I don't support his, anything he's done in his campaign or what he's, where he's moving forward with in his administration. Uh, I feel like we're gonna, we're, we've got a fight on our hands. So I agree.
Have, have you guys seen who, who he tapped for the new interior?
Yeah.
So I, I, I had seen the stuff where they said that he, he recognizes tribe solv- solv- sovereignty and stuff like that, so I don't know if he's, I don't know if he's good or not, I mean, what I'm seeing, it looks like he is, so.
Yes.
Well, I, I do think it matters. I think he will take note of the tribes that do it, just from my own conscience. I just can't do it.
I, I, and, and that's, that's, I, I feel the same way, like we've gone, the same, you know, saying, you know, here's the letters I got from tribes congratulating.
Yeah.
All seven of them, or whatever.
All right, at least not trying to whip, right?
Yeah. And then, you know, I mean, and, and we see how he is, and we see how he talks and how he acts. Now, I, you know, I don't know, but I totally respect what you guys are talking about, cause I feel the same way too, but.
I'm gone. I, I agree with Angela and Donna, I just can't. You know, we, we just, it, it's politics, say we're congratulated, fine. But if he's, you know, I just can't trust the man. So we, you know, we, we're very, we're intent, congratulations, but down the road, we don't know what he's gonna do. And I just can't trust the man and, you know, in the past, we, you know, we've always supported the United States as scouts and down to present and, uh, we're still being done wrong by, uh, the government in, in our doings without consultation or, or prior notice. I, I just can't, uh, trust, I, I just don't agree with sending a letter of congratulations to someone I just can't trust.
The read of the council members, do we know enough about this new, uh, secretary of interior to even say, you know, hey, we, we, we like this appointment? No?
Oh, yeah. They listen to you. Zink?
He's from Montana.
Yeah, Zinky.
What's his name?
Zinky or Zink, Z, uh, Z I N K E, I believe. But probably better than the initial one, he was looking at. So we're gonna vote on it or?
Well, I, I, I'll say this, you, you know, I don't think there's gonna be very many cabinet appointments that, that, you know, the Indian world will say and applaud. I mean, that's, that's just where we're at. This, this is, uh, Republican administration. He is, from what I'm seeing and from what I have read, he is putting people in there who, who, um, are, um, I'm, I'm not gonna say anti-Indian, but they are, they are pro-business. Pro-business. And if pro-business is to, um, you know, privatize Indian land, to, to take it. If, if pro-business is to shrink the budgets of IHS, BIA, Department of Ed, Indian Ed, uh, you know, all of these, these things, um, then that's what's gonna, uh, take place. Uh, once again, the federal budget comes out in February, you know, and, and, uh, you know, he's gonna give his state of the, the new state of, you know, his, his budget, his administration, you know, I believe in what, February? I think it is? Yeah, and, and so, uh, y- y- you know, it's, 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 it's from, from where I'm sitting, it's, it's gonna be a, a, a hard pull. It's, it's, that's, that's just what, what, uh, has been elected. And so, um, and, and like I said, I've, I've had discussion with, uh, you know, um, Caddo and, and, uh, uh, other tribal leaders, um, and, you know, they, they're, they're all in the, we're all in the same boat, you know? We, we didn't vote for him. Um, we don't support his policies. His policies, um, were, will be hurtful to Indian world, Indian nations, tribal government. Um, but like I said, um, just thought it, it might be more beneficial to the Pawnee Nation to send a letter of congratulations and hopeful that he would work not only with the Pawnee Nation, but with other Indian nations as he develops his administrations, programs, and that he would, would do those things. Donna?
I, I wouldn't really have that big a problem with it if we stated that in the letter, that we hope that he will work with.
Well, that's, that's, that's the letters that are going out. It's, and, and once again, it's, it's not support for his policies, it's not support even, even for the victory. It's just congratulating the victory. He is the President. He is coming in and, and he will be making the changes. But, you know, one of the things that, like I said, was, was I'm hopeful that he will work with us. I guess that's the, the language. And, and right now, that's all we have is that hope, you know? Donna?
Um, just what you're saying and what Donna said, um, I'm wondering if this could be our voice and letting them know that we're not pleased with their selection of a an interior director and recommend some of our Pawnee people. We have quite a few who could fill that position, Echolocks, Gobbers. Some way let him know that we are here, we're, um, in a way we're supportive because we have to be, but yet let him know that we are smart, educated, proud. What was the term, um, Marshall used to call us?
Greatest nation on the face of the earth.
Yeah.
Call for the question.
All right, let's vote. Um. Sending a letter to President-elect Trump, just congratulating him in being the new President, from the Pawnee Nation. Yeah. I saw you called for the vote. Call for the vote. Is there a second?
Where the most?
Uh, Angela.
I didn't know.
Oh.
I didn't, oh, was there a motion made?
Oh, oh, what are we doing?
Oh, I thought.
We were just discussing.
Oh, I thought there was a motion made. Are we gonna vote on it then?
Sure.
We, we can vote. So how, however it goes, you know, that's.
Does it have to be today? See what kinda shakes out.
Yeah, the Electoral College may not affirm him.
Well, who got that hope, bud?
I, I'm all for that, Wayne.
That's fine.
Yeah. Cause then we'll really know how involved the Russians are.
Whether we should, whether we should congratulate them.
You might be putting up a new flag.
Okay. Now, now this, this, this is just discussion then.
Okay.
This is discussion. So we will table it, tell.
Motion to table.
Motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
We have a, a motion and a second. Call for the vote. For table.
There was.
Yes.
Sammy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Donna here?
Yes.
Baby, it's about a first chair.
Yeah.
Leah, too.
Yes.
All right, so that is table.
I wanna read you a quote from that, that new interior, uh, that was appointed. And this is about the Tribal Labor Sovereignty Act in twenty fifteen. He said, uh, this is about sovereignty and opportunity and respect. The federal government already saddles our tribes with burden, burdening some of the regulations that hamper their ability to achieve the same goals of prosperity and success that we all aspire to. Uh, he was considering the fact that this, uh, 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 that in how our being notoriously overreaches in the private sector, imagine what damage they would do to the Montana tribes. Uh, and he said that, that he was supported by, uh, uh, all tribes across the nation. This bill, bill affirms my strong support for their sovereignty. So maybe he might be somebody, you know, if we just look into it some more, that when other people start talking about it, then we might find a little bit more about it.
Okay. Well, like I said, we're, we're hopeful. We're hopeful. All right. Well, let's, uh, move to item number thirteen, which is open forum. So do we have anything for open forum? Oh, yes.
I have a request. The, uh, I sent some information into our secretary, uh, copy to Bruce and for council members and our Attorney General, a request for information that's allowable under our constitution. How do you, so pay amounts that all of the Business Council or elected officials received? Uh, everyone, I'm pretty sure is aware of that, including Andrew, our Attorney General and the council. You're aware of my letter. Now, under our constitution, my request is allowed. Also, under our constitution, whenever a council member does not fulfill their, their, their duties, then they are basically by not doing so are guilty of misconduct, which is punishable in our court system. Now, my request here is why, and I would like a request from all the people that are involved in this, I'd like a reply rather, that why can't we be a constitutional nation? Now, we have enough problems with our form of government. And when one of our past presidents asked for some of this same information, it was delayed and delayed and delayed. And they, and eventually, I, I, I have no idea whether she finally got the information or not that she wanted, but then a minute after, while she passed away. And, uh, so I'm asking you, it doesn't say a timeline in the constitution, but there is a, what we would call a normal course of business as far as a timeline to get this information. Now, I had a talk with Attorney General, he's well aware of it and, uh, our treasurer is well aware of it and Bruce is sure of it. So now, why either I have the information given to me right now today, or someone needs to be subject to whatever the constitution allows in our court system to punish them for not doing so? Now, this is, this is flagrant. And so many times, by choice, we don't follow the constitution. It's there. Every, as everybody in the Zoom has read it. You know that requests are, are allowed. And I'm sick of asking multiple, multiple times for a simple fact of information. Now, in the Chaldees, they Chaldees, there's a great profession for transparency. You've got me on that one. I don't see transparency. I see people avoiding the facts of our constitution and, and it's just, at a point I think someone needs to. I think someone needs to explain to me why in the places haven't I received this information? Now, if our secretary is required to, I'd start with her, if our secretary is required.
That information you requested was sent to you.
No.
So I, I don't know what you're talking about.
There, there was two requests. The first request you fulfilled, the second request has not been fulfilled. And, 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 and our Attorney General knows the request, he knows what the, what it said actually. You, I sent it to the secretary and to our treasurer and to Bruce Pratt. Everyone knows what was in that letter. And so there's no question about what it was.
Mr. Stern, I did not receive a direct request from you addressed to me. You did not send anything directly to me. Let, let me finish, please. When I received, when I first got word of your request, I took it upon myself before anybody asked me, even asked me, I noticed, I noticed it was in financial, in nature, it was financial. So I sent a request to our division director and asked him to provide that information. Once I received it, I forwarded it to Andrew and to Mr. Mason to show them what it was and to get, um, his okay as AG to send that out, that we weren't breaking any privacy laws or anything like that. Once I got his approval, I forwarded on to President Pratt and to Secretary Littleson for dissemination. Now, I don't know why you hadn't received it, but I, I did request from them last week. Please advise the status of this, whether you send it to them or not, please let him know what's going on with this request, because I didn't appreciate you contacting our Attorney General, making threats of a lawsuit for, for non-compliance of that information when I directly and, and responded to it and provided the information immediately, which you weren't aware of. So if you ever have a question of me not responding, please come to me. Don't make threats to our AG and then for him to get it to me to my, come directly to my face, let's discuss it. Let's discuss it.
I'm explaining to you, if we go back and reread the constitution, you're not involved in this request. Secretary is involved in the request. Now, it's the secretary's job to take care of the request by constitution. Doesn't say the treasurer. So now, even though the information's under your domain, it's not your request. Now, request number two has not been fulfilled. And that is what I'm asking for today, and I'm wondering why it isn't.
Well, I, I never seen request number two.
Request number two, we sent you the financial information you wanted to know. Think you're wanting everybody's salary information?
No, I wanted the amounts that were paid. You gave me the monthly amounts that are now the, the pay schedules. How much are everyone supposed to receive per pay period? But I asked for the total amounts that were paid. The amounts that were, especially the, I was after the cumulative backdate where it was backdated to January first. That was the information I was wanting. I've said very plainly in the letter on request number two, cause I, I, I acknowledge the fact that I got the first bit of information. I can be more than happy to read.
So you're just wanting back pay information? Is that right? Just back pay information? You're wanting a back pay information?
I was wanting to know, because of the meeting in the Budget Committee, whenever the raises were given, they were given in the Budget Committee and they were not on the floor of the, of the Business Council. At that particular time, in the Budget Meeting, there was the agreement that the pay raises would be backdated to the first of the year. Now, this is a strange, number one, the strange thing is that you would have a pay raise for all the elected officials, not on the floor of the council, but you did it inside of a, a Budget Meeting where very few people, I don't know of any citizens, were in attendance. Now, the citizens are the ones that vote you in to office. Now, if you're gonna have pay raises, I think you might wanna look at the transparency part of it and have them on, bring it up as a resolution for pay raises and bring it up on the floor of the council here. Now, that didn't happen. And then having the idea of having it backdated, most pay raises, whenever nations of people with elected officials, whenever they have a agreement, I'm not saying the pay raises were warranted, that is not the question. The question is transparency. Now, most nations I've read about and researched, whenever they come up with a pay raise, they make it to where it's the next administration that gets the pay raise and not themselves, cause it would be too self-serving. Now, in this case, in the Pawnee Nation, it wasn't that way. So then, then, then having the idea that a lump sum payment, because it should've been done and basically the pay raise should've been given at the first of the year, now that's kind of a, a stretch. And so I'm saying that, number one, I didn't get the information, I asked for it on request number two. And number three, it was a, as a matter of transparency, which you are professing in Chautauq, that it wasn't, it wasn't transparent. If you did, if you gave a, if you gave yourself and approved yourself a raise in the Budget Committee, it should've been subject to public discussion or anything where the public would know what went on. And then also the, the, the retrograde back to the first of the year was another situation. But that, all the money came out of, out of our budget, out of Pawnee Nation budget. And so, I would like those answers.
I would just like to clarify. I'd like to clarify something. Well, I, I, this, I just wanna clear. Mr. Stern, can I please respond? I, I allowed you to talk all this time, I just would like clarification for the people out there that are not understanding what you're talking about. There's, um, the, these, what he's speaking of is to the increases that were approved in twenty thirteen, which where there were back pay, um, back, which was back paid. And there is another increase that's going in effect January one. So I, I just want them to know that, that are out there in the, on video, that what years he's specifically talking about. Because the, the, the previous increases were approved prior to me being as treasurer. And, uh, but the next ones that are effective in January were a part of this budget process. Thank you.
And the other thing is that, um, things that are approved in budget, they're brought here to put out here on council floor and, um, you know, you're entitled to your opinion, you're talking, you're throwing constitution at us. Well, according to constitution, you know, um, it doesn't state in there that we have to put all that out there, you know, and, and to me, you're, um, you know, you're making a big deal out of a little issue. And, you know, that information that you requested, you know, I don't have no access to financial stuff, but I will definitely get with our finance director and get that sent to you. Um, I, I just assumed it was in there, if you were sent the whole wage for the, for the years for all the council members that you could see in there if we had gotten a back pay or whatever. But if you just, um, I don't know, that may have happened in June or, I can't remember. I know that for the fact that there had been, when I got into office, there hadn't been no updated budgets. The finance department, there was maybe two people and today we have eight. Everything was backed up so far that, um, you know, they weren't getting the reports out like they should or whatever. There were a lot of things that were going on at that time when we came in. And so, um, the budgets were way behind. So when, when they did that approval, that was approved and it wasn't, um, brought to council entitled in May when it should've been done the year before. So just, there was all kinds of things that we were dealing with at that time. And so, um, yeah, it was backpaid to the beginning of the year because the budget was just now being approved for that year at that time in May. So all the budgets were being approved at that time. So that's the reason why that was backpaid, how you say. I don't know what you're trying to get out of that, but nevertheless, you know, it was before the Budget Committee, because those are open public meetings, anybody can come to them. So it's not like we're trying to hide anything or go behind the doors. It was brought here at the council meeting, it was approved through the council. You know, so, um, you know, that information you want, as soon as he gets it to me, I'll send it to you. And Angela stepped up and she did her part because it was a financial. So I just assumed you're getting your information and that's it. I didn't know that she had sent it to me and then I need to send it to you. So, um, I just, everybody stepped in. I see their responses, you know, to what your requests were. So, um, I guess from now on, if you get a request, everybody just send the information to me and then I'll, I'll send it back to you, you know, so. Um, but I, I just, I, I just seen where you were taken care of, the information was sent to you, and so that was that.
I wanna say something too. You know, uh, a few days ago, I don't know, it might've been three or four days ago, I, uh, got a Facebook message from a friend who, uh, is the editor of the Osage News. And it was concerning Cecil stating that he was, uh, uh, had some real issues with the nation, the corruption that was going on, uh, to the Pawnee Nation. And you wanted, you, you asked her about, uh, how to, uh, to do some things, I guess, as far as your, your journalism goes and takes place, you know, and stuff, so. Uh, you know, myself, you know, uh, that's, that's spreading around in, in Osage country. And, uh, you know, that's something that you had, had done, you know. So they were wanting to know, uh, about you, you know, who you were, you know, and everything. And, uh, so I told my friends, you know, who, who you were, you know, my opinion, you know. Nothing bad, I've never said nothing negative, you know, I just told them that you like to, you know, have your opinions of, of what goes on here in the tribe, you know, and everything like that, you know. But, uh, my thing is, is that, you know, you, you kind of opened that door of curiosity of what, what goes on over here at the, at the nation, you know. And some of the people, you know, may have a negative look, you know, and stuff, so. You know, that's, that's something that you, you have done, you know, and everything, so. You know, uh, no, no tribe or no council is perfect by any means, you know, and stuff, but, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinion of what they wanna do, you know. And, uh, you know, I, I, I always hear you when you talk about things, you know. And I've had discussions with you before, emails and things like that, you know, and stuff, so. You know, uh, I hope that, uh, you know, you watch, you know, and how, and who you talk to and how you, how you talk and stuff, because, uh, it could have a negative effects, not just us as a council, but us tribe as a whole. That's all, you know, I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, I don't know if the guys are all aware of that or not, but the Osage News editor, you know, knows whatever, you know, some of the things that he had stated to her, you know, about, so. They come trickle down to the grapevine.
That inquiry had to do with freedom of press issue that the Oklahoma Journalists Association has a Freedom of Press Committee. And there's two people committing, one person actually speak with the Osage News. And the other one, uh, I'm not sure who that, who that was. My, uh, my daughter was graduate of that same journalist, journalism school. And, uh, so that request wasn't to the newspaper itself, it was to the Freedom of Press Committee. And that's what we're trying to figure out. Thank you for your time. Didn't get any answers, but thank you for your time.
And this is moving on, is that right? Okay. On a good note, I want you to know that I went to a, to the Oklahoma Association for Academic Competition Alpha Fifth Grade Tournament in Manford yesterday. Um, it involves seven fifth graders. They have to take several exams before they're even approved or accepted to join the team. Um, I have a picture of them here, but out of the seven fifth graders, five are Pawnee. I was so proud of them, they did good. They did good, they didn't win, but, but I was proud of them. But I, I, they probably do four or five competitions together. And I would truly appreciate it if we could support them in some way. Um, I can send you the picture just to show you. I can't think of their names other than my granddaughter, Haley Johnson. And the Alpha Tournament was at Manford, and the schools were Manford Hominy, Collinsville Pawnee. And, uh, they won two and lost two. Quite an experience, those little ones sitting up here like this and the questions asked and they have to be the first one to answer it. Are you, any of you familiar with it? Well, that's really, it's, it's a good experience for those little ones.
I think that's something that needs to be honored later.
Yeah, I took a picture for that reason, yes. And then I also wanted to just update you on the, on the clinic, you know, we have a new director. And we got the message that the optometry department will be closed December thirteenth through the twentieth. And I happened to have an appointment, so I guess I lost it. And then the behavioral department, the psychiatrist is accepting a job with the area office on December twenty seventh. And they'll be providing psychiatric services through a telehealth system from the area office. And that will be provided by Dr. Cummings and Dr. Pierce. And we had some questions with that, with the health division director because of our grant, I forget the name of it, but it's on mental health, so. We, I feel like they need someone in Pawnee where they can talk to them eye to eye, I guess.
Can I ask you a question or not? Um, so does that mean that function is no longer at, at the Pawnee Service Unit? It's moving to the area office?
I don't know. Is that what it is? Okay. He, and also he said the social worker is retiring on the twenty third, Wednesday next week. So, um, yeah, it's that, especially with our new grant that was just approved. Um, he said that we'll have to, they're gonna be putting out a vacancy announcement for two mental health specialists. And he's also meeting with the area behavioral health consultant next week. Are you aware of that, Andrew? Okay. I would like to attend that. I'm hoping to, I'm gonna check with him and see if I can attend that, because this is an area that, that we need to keep at home.
That was on the, uh, these, these changes are due to, uh, people retiring and, and, uh, they are having a, not only here, but statewide, and not only statewide, but nationally, having a terrible time. Um, trying to fill positions, uh, doctors, pharmacists, uh, dentists. And then the behavioral health side, um, just, just, and, and that's, that's one of the, uh, the big, uh, pushes from IHS, from Mary Smith, the acting director, is, is this new initiative to, uh, recruit and retain, or retain and recruit, all, all of these positions and trying to move monies around so, so they can, um, uh, have incentive to, to have folks come to the clinics and, and it's, it's not only just the, uh, federal side, it's also the tribal side. Tribal side is having a, uh, we, we have meetings, uh, monthly and, you know, Ponka's got a doctor next month, Ponka's, well, the doctor got another, a better offer. Uh, the cause got a doctor or the cause got their whatever, better offer. And so, uh, Osage is too, and so it's. or the cause got their whatever, better offer, and so, Osage is too, and so it's really, really getting lean out there, and hopefully that the Pawnee Service Unit can fill these positions and fill them quickly. However, there's a small, small pool, there's a small pool of people for these positions, so, thank you, Leanna, for that information.
Yeah.
All right.
Here's the little tea. Isn't that nice?
That's cool. Just a few things, have we heard anything on the lawsuit, has that been finalized?
Which one?
With Ms. Hare.
Uh-uh.
Okay. Do we know how many time frame? Okay. I don't know what the holdup is, but I'd like to know.
I will make some calls this afternoon. Cindy remind me to make some calls this afternoon.
The other thing, I was very disconcerted when I realized that the fiscal policies that were revised were not going through the Treasurer or the Budget Committee, and I am adding it to my agenda to review those next time, whether I have objections or not. I feel, I looked at the Constitution, the fiscal policies are what I, my duties are directly related to, and I think I should have the review of those with my committee prior to coming to Council, and as we do the HR policies, the HR Committee reviews this, why have committees if we're not going to utilize these committees for what their purposes are? So I'll just leave it at that. The next thing on my agenda is the elders' dinner. I need to know who else, I have a ham from Bruce, I have a ham from Daryl, I'm cooking a turkey, Leanna's cooking a turkey, and I'm doing dressing, I don't know, did you commit to dressing?
If I need to.
That would be good, that we could have two. So we need one more turkey, right?
I donated one.
Oh, you did?
Are you cooking it?
Oh, I didn't.
No, he didn't go into that.
Okay.
You have two more.
I just only almost have.
I'll do one.
Okay, okay, so Donna will do one, I need sides.
I'll do mashed potatoes.
Okay, that's good.
I've donated a side also.
Okay.
A beef?
Yeah.
Nothing on record, side of beef. Vice President. Everyone come shake his hand, real quick.
No, we need someone with-
I'll do your bird, I'd like to really hash.
Okay.
I'll do another side.
Okay.
I'll bring some tea.
How many, how much potatoes are you doing, Andrew?
I don't know.
I can do, I can do some more potatoes.
Okay, okay.
So we need somebody to volunteer for gravy.
I'll do gravy.
Okay.
I'm ham gravy.
That's gravy, gravy's mine.
All right.
Okay, sounds good.
I can do ham gravy.
That guy can play around.
Okay, I'll do ham, I'll do ham gravy. Vicky, I'll do ham gravy.
We have two already, right, so I'll donate, I'll donate one, I'll donate one, my ham, and you can give the turkeys to them, and they can cook. Oh, were you going to do your own?
Or do we need that many?
We just need three, I thought.
Now, are we going to have to have these early because we all are going to be-
Yeah, we have to have it ready by 10.
By 10? We're coming in at 6. You bored?
I'm cooking mine at home and bringing it in.
If I do that, then I'll be here at 11.
No, you need to come in at 6. Let's not play around.
So these items need to be here by 10 o'clock for the homebound?
Yes, by 10 o'clock for the homebound.
Oh, and then they serve them at 11?
No, they'll, the 10, they need to be there by 10 so they can deliver.
They deliver at 10, so they've got to be ready to be-
So they need to be here before 10 there.
6 o'clock.
I thought they were going to, I thought we had to be there by 10 so they can deliver by 10:30.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
They're by 10, so that stuff can be delivered at 10.
Don't listen to Leanna, I'm hoping to.
You have to listen to me.
I don't know.
How many are being delivered?
I just heard 60, up to 60 homebound.
Up to 60 homebound?
Sixty.
So how many is going to be in attendance?
60 home.
Whatever elders want.
Okay, so about 100 people, right, uh-huh.
Okay.
Third, around 30 for the, but that's also, because it's not just Title VII, so you guys explain to the elders, so other people who don't go to the program, which is my show.
Okay.
So I guess with the money, she needs to get desserts then.
Yeah, sure.
My side is a dessert.
Now, you said you would get, you said you would get the cash and go to Sam's and do all that.
Buy desserts.
But, well, the paper goods and all that.
Yeah. I, did I say I would bring a cobbler?
Yes, you did.
But you weren't even there.
I got that, I got that in my notes.
So are you going to bring a peach cobbler?
I can bring a cobbler.
A peach cobbler, no.
I don't know. I got to go catch the peaches.
Okay, well, thank you all, that's all I had, I just wanted to finalize that.
Thank you, Angela.
Anything else?
Take them down.
Well, at this time, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, a motion from Angela, so moved by the vice. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, good meeting.